He can take over when he gets on. It's now six oh five P M. Moving ahead, start the City of Kennedy, Texas Regular City Council Meeting for July fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Amanda, can you please call Row? Got a call present? Check.
Counselor Wynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Stein?
Here.
Counselor Conno?
Yeah.
And Counselor Meyer?
Here.
Our counselors are present.
Okay, with roll call being said, Leslie, can you please say the prayer for us?
Sure. Oh, Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon. First of all, thanking you for the wonderful weather and how you take care of us. Asking that you would be with us as we work toward helping and doing the things to make our city continue to be better. We ask that you would give us wisdom, understanding, and knowledge so that we can do the right things in your name. In the precious name of your son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Item number four, citizen comments. Amanda, do we have any com- citizen comments for this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to item number five, departmental reports. Starting off with the City Secretary.
Okay, I have um my report and then I have the fire department report. So as soon as I'm done with mine, I'll just go ahead and do the fire department one as well.
Okay, sounds good. Go ahead.
So, the city had two new hires for the month of June. Um, City Hall continues to accept payments through our drop box at the end of the ramp and at the front of, of the door, front door of our office. Um, customers can also call and make any payments over the phone with a debit or credit card. Um, late season disconnect were going to begin this month. However, due to the spike in COVID nineteen in our area and our office is having to be closed without notice, late season disconnects have been waived this month. So if anyone asks um any of the counselors, we do not, do not have to worry about being disconnected for the month, for this month. Um, employees at City Hall have been working hard to serve our customers while staying safe and taking preventative measures um with COVID nineteen. Um, in the month of June, the time clocks um were officially up and running. We are currently in our third payroll cycle using the time clock. That is my City Secretary report, and now I will give you the fire department report.
Okay.
The fire department um reported to three calls for the month of June. They have purchased a two thousand and nine Polaris Ranger um side by side, side by side rigged out in emergency equipment. Um, and there were no new members for the month of June. And from there, I will hand it over to Joel. Let me just unmute him really quick.
Well, compliance, the boy. Joel, you there, Joel?
I'm getting him. Give me just a second.
Okay.
It's just a little harder on my laptop and I've been on my computer. Okay, Joel, you are unmuted.
Okay, good evening, council. Hopefully, everybody's doing okay this evening. I'll make it short and sweet. We've had a total of fifteen permits, eleven inspections, twenty-one roll-offs, um, four dangerous billing violations have been put out. And we've had, I've had a very good response on violation letters with people doing what need to do to fix their violations. And that is about all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Joel?
I have one uh request, maybe, Joel, is, is something that maybe you could look into.
Yes, ma'am. What's that?
On the corner of Pettis and Goliad, there's a blind spot there. Uh, that's a pretty little dangerous uh if you're crossing Goliad. I don't know if that's gonna be the um, the lot owner maybe to trim that, or if you could just look at it.
I'll go double, I'll go check on that and see if it's in our easement, see if we can get it taken care of.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Good, thank you, Joel. Public Works Director report?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'll start with the water treatment plant. Uh, total water produced was forty-three point eight million gallons. Total water loss was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand gallons. Excuse, did somebody say something?
No.
Okay, uh, I'll go ahead with the streets. The Streets Department had a hundred and thirty-five service orders and/or requests completed. That's forty-nine point three cubic yards of asphalt used and six point eight cubic yards of base used. Waste Water Treatment Plant, no violations for the month of June. The daily flow average was one point two three two M G D. The monthly flow was thirty-six point nine million gallons. We had a total of three point four inches of rain recorded for the month of June at the wastewater plant. And we had one S S O reported that we uh reported to T C Q for a sewer spillage on Graham Road. Um, I'll move on to the distribution and collection. We had one routine sample that we take monthly that came back positive for coliform. We took the repeat samples uh in accordance with T C Q rules and regulations. All the repeat samples uh came back negative. So uh, that took care of that. We had one new water service and one new sewer service. We had sixteen re-reads. We checked twenty-two for leaks, and we repaired seventeen leaks. Um, we had three sewer leaks, our backups that we cleaned, and we uh maintenance and jetted sixty-four sewer lines. We had a miscellaneous service orders that we completed of ninety-eight. And then uh our projects that we have in progress, uh mentioned last month of Pullen Street. Uh, the sewer line is complete. It's been replaced in the water line. Technically would be replaced or finished out, completed this Thursday if we can uh, but it may be pushed back a day or two because of the COVID. And then it'll be ready for uh pavements, the metals, and so forth. Uh, the DeWitt Bridge project that I many, uh, mentioned last month, that's been completed. Uh, the Maytag Water Line Replacement, uh, they made the final tie-ins, but they, they had some difficulties as um, some people are aware of last night, or yesterday and, and uh last night, that we ran into that we didn't anticipate. Uh, all the disinfect, the lines were disinfected, the samples were all negative, the pressure test was complete. Uh, like I say, they, but uh, they'll still have a little bit of odds and ends to do, but it, it's almost a hundred percent complete. Phase one at the wastewater treatment plant, I believe, when I wrote this, it was nearly complete, but I believe Chris and I have signed off on that. So that is uh, phase one has been complete. Phase two at the wastewater treatment plant is underway, and they're uh working on all their prep work and uh so forth for, to get started on phase two. The Water Treatment Plant Annex is nearing completion. Uh, we have scheduled, I believe, our final walkthrough. Uh, I believe it was scheduled for this week, but there was just some uh minor things like scratches on paint and the countertops and stuff for that, but uh all the basic stuff has been completed. Um, we were doing some construction to protect a water main that had washed out from all the flooding over on Park Place. That's been complete. Uh, and the sewer line that we were replacing between Maple and Elm back in the easement, we completed as much as that as we could. We're waiting on response from a landowner. Uh, just, you know, to make sure that we can be clear to go in on their property to finish the rest of that. Uh, I completed, or we, the city completed the C C R Annual Drinking Water Report for twenty nineteen, and those were mailed out uh before July first. Y'all should have, uh, most people should have received those in the mail. Um, we sent out letters to customers concerning the water outage on DeWitt and the surrounding areas, and we've tried our best to notify customers bef, you know, when we could schedule outages. And we've issued uh three boil water notices for the month of June. One was for DeWitt, one was for Maytag, and one was for Fifth Street. And those notices were rescinded. Uh, of course, we've done some more stuff since then, but uh that falls into the month of July. Uh, that, that's about all I have, so if you have anything you'd like to ask. I know I went through everything kinda fast.
Hey, Joel, I got a quick quest, uh, so, uh, sorry, Jerry, I got a quick question to ask you. With the summer month, with the summer months here and everything drying up and the temperatures heating up, how are the pumps working out there? Are they being overworked? Do you see any problems with any of them that might have caught your eye? How's the integrity of them working right now?
Everything seems to be going pretty good. Uh, I mean, you know, we're starting to get heated up, but the water usage, from what I can tell, is still run, let me fumble through these pages real quick. Uh, da-da-da-da-da. I have that with me. It's just getting to it. I think we're averaging about the same so far. But uh, the biggest months are usually July, August, and September. I got about thirty pages here, so I'm trying to fumble through that and find I have it. Just uh... Well, I said I had it. Okay, uh, January was thirty-eight mil, February forty mil, March forty-four mil, April thirty-nine, May forty-four, June forty-three. So, we're, we're averaging about normal. So, e- everything is still looking pretty good on the pumpage and everything seems to be running. All the pumps and stuff running normal so far.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jerry? All right, thank you, Jerry. Police Department, Police Chief report.
Can you hear me? You got me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, so I have, uh, I'll do three reports, police, uh, animal control, and our emergency management. Uh, before I start on the police, I was asked to mention, there's a couple of questions about a call we had, a shots fired call. Um, up on Graham. Officer did respond, located the people, got them to comply, uh, issued them a warning. And then uh we did go back today and canvass the neighborhood and make sure there was no damage or injuries to anybody. Um, followed up on that, and I know there's some questions, so I wanted to mention that real quick. Um, for the police report, a couple items of interest. Um, our birthday request, we, we only had one in June. Uh, we're gonna kinda phase that out. We're not really getting calls for those anymore. They were really fun, but I think with summer here, they kinda phased out. Uh, we started our traffic unit on June fifteenth. Uh, y'all approved us hiring another person to uh be a traffic officer. He started on June fifteenth, uh, focusing on the truck route violations and uh other dangerous violations. So far, he's already written sixty-six uh truck route violations. Uh, we also increased a lot of other citations as well for speeding and other items. Uh, he is writing a lot more warnings than citations, which is good, I think. Um, we're trying to gain compliance, and so, uh, that's good. He's doing a really good job. Uh, he was also assigned to um transport any mental health cases that we have. Uh, was part of his duties, and we did have one the other night where we called them out, so we did not have to call county out, which is kinda what we were trying to do. So that's working as well. Um, we did, uh, for the month of June, we did our, our semi-annual in-service training. Uh, this time, we focused on our use of force. Um, as y'all know, watching the news, there's been a lot of uh intention and a lot of uh discussion about a couple of use of force, chokeholds, and some other things. Um, so we did our annual training on our use of force. I did add two sections to our policy uh that were recommended by the Police Chiefs Association. One that bans all chokeholds of any kind, and another one that requires officers to intervene if they see an officer doing something illegal. Um, if failure to intervene can, uh, would, you can be fired as well. Uh, so we added those in. Um, those are two uh areas that are, are being recommended now. Uh, also, as part of that same vein, um, we are working on our, we're continuing to work on uploading our standards for the recognition program. Uh, I've mentioned that to you a couple of times, but it's basically a best practices program. Once we are through uploading the standards and we're approved, we will be considered a recognized agency, which means we adhere to the best practices in the industry. Um, the president, in his order on policing, mentioned that he was gonna start tying any federal grants, that in order to get federal grants, you had to be a recognized agency, so we're headed in the right dec- direction for that if we want to get federal grants. Um, so that, we're kind of ahead of the curve on that, so. Um, I don't know if you've noticed on our Facebook, I've started putting out a weekly newsletter on activities in our department. Uh, we're trying to be, give more information to the citizens so they know more about what we do as an agency. Um, I haven't got a lot of feedback on it yet, but I'm hoping that people are enjoying that as well. Uh, we moved our speed monitors. They were up on Cottonwood and Eighth Street, and then now I put one on Seventh Street and then one back on North Fifth. Uh, we've had them there before, North Fifth, but that's a heavily traveled road, so it's probably good uh to put one back up there. For our calls, um, fairly average number of calls for the month, I haven't seen a big increase. Our, I know the, the last time the mayor had asked me about burglaries and thefts, uh, our average number for a month combined with burglaries and thefts are sixteen is the normal average. We had fourteen last month, so we're kinda just running on average number there. Um, so, let me move on to, real quick, to animal control. Uh, animal control, they, uh, we had one of our guys out for a couple of weeks uh with COVID thing, but he is back now and we're happy. Um, we had thirty-seven calls for service last month in animal control. They picked up seventeen dogs and fifteen cats. They also picked up twelve dead animals. Um, most of those go to the rescue group, uh, and some of them are either reclaimed or we did dot three out ourselves. They also picked up three snakes, five opossums, one raccoon, and a fox. Um, we issued two citations and one warning. And then for emergency management, uh, the biggest, uh, we continue to see a serious rapid increase in COVID. I know you're seeing those numbers. Uh, as of a little while ago, I think we were eighty-one uh in Karnes County, but I don't think it was updated today, so it's probably higher. Um, we do have a mask order in place. Um, we uh, the ordinance you passed last time, uh, we went and handed out that copy of that ordinance to all businesses in town and explained it to them. Uh, we've also been checking up to ensure compliance with those ordinance. So far, getting really good results. We've only had to warn one store, uh, who was not uh making people wear masks. Uh, so hopefully that was fixed. The siren issue, we're still working on that. We think we have an, uh, we're gonna, have a plan now. We're gonna try to repair the one we have. If that doesn't work, then we're gonna try to do some other things. But it does work, it just doesn't rotate, and so we're trying to get that repaired. And I know that was a lot. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Chief at the moment?
This is Brenda, Chief.
Yes.
I just wanna, you know, I did see the newsletter. I really liked it. That was really good. I, I think it gives our, our citizens a little bit of insight of what you guys are doing. Keep that up. I really liked it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't see a report here for the municipal court. Are they not turning in a report, or?
Uh, not yet, they're not. We're still, still work in progress getting all these reports together for you guys. Um, but we are gonna be working with uh the judge and the clerk there to get a report. I'm hoping to have it up there by next month for you guys.
Okay, but we used to get them. Why aren't we, is, did they change something, or?
Um, I have not been made aware of any changes over there. Um, the judge has not said that he's changed anything differently. I just um, I just haven't seen them, and I'll just have to follow up with that, counselor. That's, that's, that's me. I dropped the ball on that. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Chief Ash still, still on the line?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Counselor Brown is here. Uh, just got a quick question. Uh, I really do appreciate what y'all have been doing with that traffic control officer. He's doing his job. I've seen him stopping a lot of eighteen-wheelers. Uh, my question is, when he goes off duty, is there someone that takes a spot during the night? Or is that night open for whoever decides they're gonna be in that area to take control of that, those three roads, Seven Nineteen, Downtown Kennedy, uh, and the truck route?
No, when he's not working, then our, our patrol officers are still here. Uh, they work traffic as part of their patrol duties, but they're not necessarily assigned to just that area. Uh, mainly, we work the, uh, during the day when the most traffic is out, uh, is when we have him out trying to focus on that.
Okay. All right, I'll keep up the great work. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Chief Ash? All right, moving on to item number six, City Manager Report. Mr. Lynn, you got a report to give us?
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, good evening, council. Um, first, I'd like to uh say thank you to each of our residents and businesses out there. Uh, I realize that during this pandemic, uh, it is not pleasant to have to do some things that they're being asked to do. But I wanted to say to everybody, I am very uh excited, if you will, uh, to go shopping in the City of Kennedy and see businesses and residential life complying with uh, our local officials' ordinances and the governor's executive orders. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody, and uh hopefully, God willing, we'll be through this uh thing as quickly as possible. Um, moving on, I'd also like to uh draw council's attention back to Chief Ash for one moment. Uh, our police chief has many years of policing, and uh he is a fairly accomplished uh police chief. And just recently, uh, Chief Ash has been selected to serve on the Texas Police Chiefs Association Board. Uh, and, and that's a very high honor uh for him to receive, and we are so privileged to be able to have someone such a caliber that has been nominated by his peers to serve on this board, so congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, um, we had a, an opening in the, the Code Enforcement Division, and we did a, uh, we did some applications, we did some internal, some external. We ended up uh moving an individual internally over to Code Enforcement. So, that's, that's in line with the direction that council expressed to me in my interview, wanting to see upward mobility within the city for the city employees. Uh, we also had a uh position available in the Streets Department uh for a street superintendent. And that position was created when we moved the then-street superintendent to the Parks Department to help out the Parks Department uh people there. And we put that one out for uh applications as well. Uh, we talked to a couple of people with that, including one internal candidate. Uh, we ended up going with the internal candidate. Uh, he had over twenty years experience with the state of Texas, at TexDOT, working on roads. Uh, we're very privileged to have him with us. Uh, so we moved him up into that slot, and uh from what I have seen, since we've put him there, he's made a positive impact uh with the street teams. Uh, the morale seems to be a little uh more lighter and bouncier, and they, uh, they get things done fairly quickly. Uh, so we're very privileged to have um Mr. Hernandez with us there. Um, the Parks and Rector Rector uh position is still a work in progress. We had two interviews uh over the last month. Uh, and as uh, right now, we are conducting the background checks on both of those candidates, as well as employment reference checks on both of those candidates. Um, provided those uh background and reference checks come back satisfactory, I will schedule a final interview with them, and then I will go through that process uh at that appropriate time. So, just to kinda give you guys an update as to where we are on that, we're trying to wrap that one up uh as quickly as we can. Uh, as council has asked me to, uh, at the last meeting, uh, as we're going into the budget season, um, I will be creating the department uh for the city engineer for council to look at and see how that potentially fits within the uh, the construction of our budgetary process, and uh whether or not council wants to continue to move forward with leaving that in as a department, or whether they will wish to remove it. But I was asked to make sure I put that in there, and so I will do that. Uh, just to let you guys know, as far as the budgets go, uh, we are working with the department heads uh on the budget. Uh, once we have the preliminary budgets done with the department heads, uh, I will go back and refine them with the department heads. Uh, after I refine them with the department heads, uh, I will put that together in a clean copy. Uh, then that clean copy will come to council in a uh budget here, a budget workshop, where you guys will have a clean copy to look at and go from, and then we can talk about it together as a governing body and staff as to what you like, what you don't like, what you think needs to be changed at that point. Um, the goal of this is that when we walk out of the budget workshop that day, is with whatever revisions the council has, plus whatever is left unrevived, uh, will translate into the budget that will, that will be presented for adoption at a regular council meeting. So, that's kind of the goal we're looking at here. Um, so just to let you know where we are on that, my hopes are COVID nineteen pending uh to have this uh budget workshop towards the end of the month, maybe the first part of August. uh, to have this, uh, budget workshop towards the end of the month, maybe the first part of August. So, I'm looking to get this done fairly quick, uh, from this point forward. So, just to let you guys know what's going on there.
Mr. Lynn, I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is Brenda. Um, so for the workshop, are you just planning to have one? Or do you have in place that possibly we might have to have two or three? Just wondering.
Uh, usually, um, we can get through it in one workshop if the budget's presented properly. Um, so I'm looking to have one, and if we come out of that one and we see that we're gonna have to have a second, we can be fluid and schedule a second. We have until August thirtieth to adopt it, so, um...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were planning just in case we needed to have more than one, just that you have that in the back of your mind, that it's possible that we might have to have another one if we don't agree on the first one.
Oh, yes, ma'am, most definitely, yeah.
Excellent.
Mr. Lynn had a question as well. Can we just make sure that the budget workshop does not fall on the, uh, third Tuesday of the month? Cause we, that's when we have our chamber board meetings.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, yeah, we can, we can do that. That's not a problem at all. Yes, sir. Um, we, uh, as you all know from looking at the agenda, there's a line item on there that we're gonna discuss later. Um, this line item, uh, is for, um, grant administrators. Uh, last meeting, we discussed going out for a grant administrator to handle several grants for us. Uh, so where we are tonight is we're gonna be looking at the, uh, downtime revitalization program and the FAST grant, and, uh, just so you know, the FAST grant is, uh, we're looking to, uh, get a ladder truck, and I'll go over more of that when we get that line item. Um, in addition to those two grants, there's, there's three more things we're looking at going after in the city of Kennedy. Uh, one of them, uh, Counsel Meyer was a party to with Judge Hedke. Uh, we talked about this, uh, GLO funding, uh, for hazardous mitigation. Uh, we're gonna be looking at going out for that, and I will be putting out the RFPs, uh, for the grant administrator for that later this week. Uh, once we get the, um, grant administrators secured for that one, then the next two that we're gonna look at kinda will work, uh, hand in hand. Uh, and I'm going after these other two, um, more specifically to help finance our water transmission line. Uh, we'll be looking at USDA grant or loan, uh, and we'll be looking at the Texas Water Board Development Grants or Loans, uh, to help finance, uh, that project so that we do, so that we, number one, can maximize our city dollars, uh, in spending on this, but number two, so that we don't have to go out for any more bonds, uh, or anything like that. So, just, uh, keep in the back of your mind that we're moving forward on these things, but as the grant season kicks off, if you will, things will heat up pretty quick, and then we're gonna be moving pretty fast, uh, on, on getting things out there, cause there'll be some time delays. So, uh, just to let you know, it's kind of the direction we're looking at going there. Um, so other than that, uh, do you guys have any questions about my report before I get into the presentation, financials? Okay, very good then. Yes?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Okay, very good then, I'm gonna move right into the presentation of our, our financial report then. Um, ah, yes? That might have just been me on an echo. Uh, the cover sheet that I gave you guys shows our revenues and expenditures, uh, consolidated for the month by fund, the general fund and the water sewer, and then totals. Uh, so as we walk through it again this month, we'll start with the revenues. Um, the general fund revenues are underperforming. Uh, we're about seventy-five percent, uh, into our budget year, and the, uh, general fund revenues are trending at seventy-one point four-six percent, which is about three point five-four percent, uh, lagging behind where we should be. Uh, our water revenues, uh, they're lagging as well. Uh, they should be at seventy-five percent as well, but they were at sixty-one point two-seven percent. A, a good portion of that is going to be the rate fees that we've been waiving, uh, for COVID-nineteen. Um, and the fact that we've been very lenient with people paying their bills. So, uh, rather than people having to pay their bills every month and come in here because of what's been going on, we've been lenient, so they haven't been paying. So, that, the revenues being done are, are directly attributable to the COVID-nineteen. Uh, overall, the city's revenues are, uh, at sixty-four point nine-five percent, uh, of what they should be. So, we're trending about, uh, ten point oh-five percent behind where we should be on revenues at this point in the year. Um, and again, that's, that's all gonna be mainly COVID-related. Uh, the expenditures, uh, when we look at the general fund expenditure line item there, right below it, again, seventy-five percent is our benchmark. Uh, we're at sixty-seven point seven-nine percent. Now, that number's lower than seventy-five, so that means we're outperforming our budget, which means we're spending less than what we are projected to spend, so that's a really good thing, especially whenever our revenues are down. Uh, the water and sewer department, uh, they're at fifty-two point two-six percent of their budget for expenditures, so they're really watching what they spend, uh, which is a really good thing as well. Uh, so overall, the city is, uh, trending at about fifty-seven point eight-one, uh, or about seventeen, uh, point one-nine percent ahead of where we should be. So, even though our revenues are lagging, which is, which is a bad thing, we're, we're outperforming in our expenditures, so we're saving money, so we're making up for it by not spending money. Um, and in the very bottom line there, uh, we, we have a, um, net increase/decrease to our, our cash surplus of a one point one. Um, if you move over to the left-hand column, which says available liquidity, this is where we are as a municipality today. So, if everything stopped, if all the money stopped flowing today, how much cash or cash equivalents, uh, we could pay our bills and take care of our debt? So, we have about seven point one million in the general fund, um, which is good. Uh, we have, uh, two point four roughly in the hotel motel tax fund at Texpool. Uh, the water sewer fund at Texpool has one point eight million, and the paving fund has about two point four million. Um, so that gives us a total Texpool account, uh, where our money is sitting for investments at about thirteen point nine million dollars. So, we're fi, we're somewhat solvent, but given our budget, that, that would only carry us a couple of months. Um, our cash in bank as of, um, the other day was four point four million in the ca, in the bank. So, you know, and that, that fluctuates depending upon, uh, checks coming in and things of that nature. So, overall, our total liquidity, uh, in the city is about eight point, eighteen point four million dollars. So, we're pretty strong, uh, right now, given what our, our monthly budgets are and that, we, we could survive quite a few months if the cash stopped flowing altogether. So, we're doing pretty good right now. Um, there is one thing I do wanna mention before I turn it over for questions on the financials, uh, that I failed to mention in my report, but it's somewhat a financial thing. We have an airport, and I have been thinking about this for a very long time, and I'm pulling the trigger on this now. Uh, I am making the airport a, uh, a separate fund of its own. Right now, the airport is just an expenditure line item in our budget. Um, they do get revenues, and we need transparency with that airport. Uh, the goal is, at some point in the future, that airport is to be an enterprise fund, and, uh, what that simply means is that it should be self-supporting, making its own money, paying its own bills off of the revenues it generates. Uh, and that's the goal and the direction I'm moving that airport towards. Uh, so when we do the budget, y'all are gonna see that will be a little different this year as well. So, but anyway, so that kinda wraps up in a nutshell our financials and, uh, where we are. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a quick question in regards to the paving fund. Um, I'm looking over your financial report, and it looks like all we've spent out of there is just professional fees. Um, is this where the money's gonna come from in regards to paving, pulling? And when can we expect to go out for bid for that?
Yes, sir, that's, you're very accurate in that. That is where we're gonna pull the money for pulling out of. Um, and we are gonna start going out for bids for that as soon as I get with Mr. Hernandez. Uh, we had a, uh, rough-scale plan, but Mr. Hernandez has built roads for TexDOT, so I wanted him to review it as the street superintendent and give me his expertise on it. And when he and I and the public works director sit down and we agree on that, we're gonna put that out for bids, uh, right away, so that we can start that process to get that done, so that the, um, Sarah will have that ready to go for the opening of the park.
Good deal, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is pulling string gonna be made a little bit wider with that?
Yes, they are making it a little bit wider.
Okay, I didn't know how much room y'all had to make it wider.
Not a lot of room there, counselor. That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted Mr. Hernandez to look at it, cause it, it's a, it's a, it's a tough challenge to, to make it much wider.
That's what I figured, I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number seven, consent agenda. A, opinion city coun, uh, city council minutes, be approved financials. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number seven.
I'll, I'll second that.
Got a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Everybody have a chance to look over the city council minutes?
Yes.
Are we sitting in a packet? Did y'all see, have any questions, any discrepancies that y'all like to bring up before we go ahead and move on to approval? Also, with the financials, any other, any other questions that may have caught anybody's eye?
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, I got a second?
A second.
You got a second? Amanda, all in favor? Amanda, please call roll.
Counsel Breone?
Yes.
Counsel Winn?
Yes.
Counsel Sine?
Yes.
Counsel Kano?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, did I miss anybody? I'm sorry. No, I'll put it in.
Everybody.
Everybody, yes. Moving on to number eight, consider, uh, consideration and possible action in regard to authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement for a city attorney. Do I have a motion for discussion?
I make a motion that we, uh, on item number eight on the agenda.
I'll second.
Discussion. Do you have a presentation for this?
Yes, sir, counselors. Um, in back, we decided that, uh, every once in a while, every few years, you need to go out for RFPs for several services within the city, and the city attorney is one of those. Um, it's just the nature of the beast and, and the business, and city attorneys understand that. Uh, so we put it out for RF, um, RFQs, and, um, we got quite a response. We had six attorneys, uh, submit, um, proposals in, and, uh, those are the, uh, proposals that were forwarded to you in a separate email. I did do a small spreadsheet, uh, that I forwarded you this evening before the council meeting, uh, just a brief synopsis of the six firms and, and some of the key things about them that might be of interest to you guys. Um, I thought what we would do, uh, before we got really rolling on this one, would be that I would, we would let Ms. Hines and all the attorneys who, uh, are present tonight, one by one, have a one or two-minute introduction to introduce themselves to the council, and, uh, then after all those attorneys were completed doing that, we would open the floor up for council, ask any questions of any law firm that they, uh, had a question about, or ask any questions at that point. Uh, if council's in agreement with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hines, would you please kind of guide that ship with those attorneys who you have on mute? And one by one, we'll give them a minute or two to introduce themselves to the council?
Sure. The first law firm that I will unmute is, and forgive me if I say it wrong, Bajorquez Law Firm. And your answer.
Hi, I'm Steve Alcorn, and I have the pleasure of the last couple of years of working with Alan Biorquez, uh, who I met when I worked for the city of Garland about twenty-five years ago. Uh, and has, he has continued to work for city governments and set up his own firm about seventeen years ago. And, uh, we currently represent twenty-seven cities as city attorney, and then there's many other clients that we have where we do a special, special counsel, outside counsel on different things, ethics, some of them on land use. Uh, we probably do a lot of litigation, other things. Uh, the office is really unique in that there are twenty-three attorneys spread out in nine different locations. I'm in Corpus Christi, um, we have one in San Antonio, we have several in Tyler, Dallas-Fort Worth, uh, El Paso and Lubbock, uh, and one in the valley. But primarily, most of the work, and there's eight attorneys based out of Au, out of Austin, that work pretty much full-time, and the rest of us are quote-unquote "counsel", which means we, you know, work on different projects and different things, but we're not necessarily in the office full-time. So, the plan would be that I would drive up when I'm needed, uh, council meetings, that sort of stuff, to boat ninety miles, and, but, a lot of the, any litigation and any of the major paperwork things would, would come through the Austin office. We also have a, a branch called City Hall Essentials that prepare, that has packets prepared for different things, that, different, um, projects, that sort of thing, that we can provide. We also provide services to city secretaries, uh, and other municipal officers that need assistance. Is that, was that my minute time?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Alcorn.
Thank you.
Is there another county president, Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I had my phone on mute. Uh, the next person I will unmute is Paul Fletcher, and he is with Langley and Bannock Incorporated. And you are unmuted, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Paul Fletcher with Langley and Bannock. Uh, we're a full silvers law firm. I like to say that we do everything except for criminal law, uh, and patents. However, we do, do municipal prosecution as part of our services. Uh, we have approximately seventy attorneys, most of which are based in San Antonio. Uh, of those seventy attorneys, approximately ten of them focus on municipal law or government-related type work. Um, with our offices in San Antonio, uh, we represent some smaller cities such as Shurk, Selma, Hill Country Village, uh, and Kirby. We also represent, uh, the city of Eagle Pass. Uh, we have offices in Karnes City, um, Eagle Pass, Carizo Springs, San Antonio, New Braunfels, uh, and Kerrville is our newest office. Uh, we'd love the opportunity to provide you all with legal services. Uh, we've provided, um, a brochure, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
I have two representatives from Olson and Olson, so I will unmute. I have two representatives from Olson and Olson, so I will unmute both of them.
Hello, my name is Art Pertal. Hello, my name is, is Art Pertal, and I'm a partner, senior partner and owner of the firm Olson and Olson. Our, our firm has practiced municipal law and governmental law solely. We only, we only work on one side, one side of the docket. We only represent government, governmental entities. Our firm is divided up into, into three sections. Basically, we have a section that, that primarily does, represents cities as, as city attorneys. We represent approximately, uh, forty cities, uh, as, as, as city attorneys, or representing as general counsel to their, uh, economic development corporation, most of them in the, in the greater Houston area. We also do a, a lot of work in, with that group, uh, as, as far as, uh, uh, outside work, both, uh, doing special projects from cities all across the state of Texas. We have clients as far as, as Odessa, and, and we have large clients, small clients. We do a bunch of work for the, for the city of Houston also. And we do, and we do projects for small cities such as, such as Daball, and even, even cities smaller than that. So that's all we do, is, is municipal work basically, and that's all we, we've ever done. Our other group, uh, that we have is a group that, that works with, uh, TML Riskpool. They represent cities when, when cities get sued. That's what we, we have lawyers, and, and that's all they do, is they defend cities when cities get sued. Our third group is a group that represents the Harris County Appraisal District. They do appraisal, appraisal district work. To, to sum it up, what I can tell you with, with our firm, our firm, we, we have lawyers that are, are very experienced. If you look in our, in our packet, you will see that the lawyers that would be assigned, be assigned to your city have, have over seventy years of experience in, in representing governmental entities. The lawyers that, that would be assigned to you, that's all, that's all they've ever done is represent governmental entities. Excuse myself, I got thirty-three years representing, representing cities. Uh, Scott Bowles has forty-three years representing cities. That's, that's all that we do. We, we, we specialize in representing cities, and we think that we provide a service with our experience that you're able to get more bang, bang for your buck. It takes us a lot less time to find the answers and to solve your problems than you would if you hired someone that's gonna assign their junior lawyer, or the new lawyer, or the distant lawyer to your, to your project. And as, and lastly, I'd say, we, we represent all size cities. We represent cities that have as, have as few as, as a hundred and twenty-five people, and we represent cities as large that have thirty thousand people. So, and with that, thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation to you.
Thank you, Mr. Pertal.
Anybody else? Anybody else, Amanda?
That, that is all.
Okay. Counsel, welcome to floor to you. Uh, any questions you might have for the three law firms that, 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 uh, thought enough to be here tonight, uh, to, uh, vie for our business?
So I noticed, I know Langley and Banach has a local office in Karn City. Would the attorney, assigned attorney that would be representing Kennedy, do they office out of that, uh, office? Or would they be traveling from San Antonio?
Let me just a sec, I need to un- I don't believe he's unmuted.
That'd be Mr., yeah, Mr. Fletcher.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing if he's still on the call.
Hello?
I think he left the call, let me double check.
Hello, hello?
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
We can hear.
Yes, I was, I was, I was disconnected. I think it's, it's, uh, I don't know what happened here at the house when I was disconnected. I apologize.
Okay. You may have to ask him the question again, Justin.
Is, is this, uh, Mr. Fletcher with Langley and Banach? It is?
No, no, this is Mr. Pertal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
So, Mr. Fletcher, it looks like Mr. Fletcher.
Okay, okay. Um, Mr. Lynn, did he, did they, I, I'm, I was curious if it was gonna be a local attorney? Or if it was going to, if it went with Langley and Banach, would it be a local attorney, or would it be somebody that they would be assigning to, you know?
Uh, I believe they would be looking at assigning, uh, a fairly local attorney, yes, sir.
And then with your spreadsheet that you sent us, is that the order which you ranked them from top to bottom? Or was it just random putting it on there?
Uh, for the most part, the top two were ranked in my order. Uh, the others were fairly random.
Who said the top two?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you, the, the top two law firms that you put on there, have you ever had any past experience with them? Like, have you ever worked with them in cities?
The, the top law firm I have worked with in the past, the second law firm, their senior partner I know of from, uh, when he was city attorney in the city of Waco. Uh, and I have, uh, a lot of good interactions with, uh, some people that were very close to that organization. Uh, that is one of the reasons why I chose those two law firms. They both have stellar reputations, uh, in municipal law, and they both focus on municipal law.
Now, do you feel like they're-
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Justin.
No, 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 all I was gonna say is, do you feel like they're pretty equal law firms, the top two?
I, I think they're pretty close, I, I will say that. Um, to say that they're equal would, would be a little bit of a stretch. There are some differences between the two, uh, and to how they, how they interact overall with municipalities. Uh, one, one thing is that, uh, that, that second law firm puts on an annual, uh, seminar, if you will, and they don't charge you a registration fee. Um, but beyond that, they are mostly city attorneys. Um, and they, they come in, they do their job, they do their job well. Uh, that first law firm, uh, the primary partner is a very accomplished speaker, uh, for municipal law seminars. Uh, he's written, uh, authored a book that the municipal clerks, uh, have been publishing for years. We have three of those books here in City Hall. Um, they have the, uh, the one arm of their business that is geared towards training, taking people who, uh, are maybe new to government or who need help learning how to do government, and teaching them the right way to do government. So not only do they come in and do the same thing as the second law firm and be your city attorney, and, and make you follow the code, they will help you get there through training. So they build value within the staff, uh, and the council, uh, as well as keep the city legal. Um, you know, both firms are really good. Um, I would be honored to work with either firm, honestly. Uh, but if, if, if I had to choose one, the top one would be my choice.
So I have a question. You said for the top choice, you had worked with them before. Where was that?
That was in my first assignment, in, in Dallas.
And what was your experience with them? And you, I know you probably can't talk about specifics, but can you think of something that would stand out to you when they worked with either?
I, I, I will tell you that one of the, some of the things that stood out was, uh, uh, it's very rare that a city hires a firm, fires that firm, and then rehires that firm. And that's what happened up there. Uh, they were hired, and I came in as a new city manager, uh, with a lot of business experience, a lot of fraud experience, but very little, uh, administrative government experience. And I challenged their top lawyer, uh, every single day. Uh, I, I, I gave her gray hairs, and she coached me through things and taught me the government code. And the primary partner of that firm, he was very understanding whenever I would talk to him and ask him questions. Uh, they were there every step of the way, guiding me through things and teaching me to get me to the point of the stuff that I know today. Um, I, I know that at one point in time, uh, the owner and I had a hard conversation about, uh, billables to the city. Uh, they were providing both city attorney services and prosecutor services, and they were traveling out of Austin to do it. And I had, I told him on the phone, I very simply said to him, hey, I know for a fact your attorney's driving up a mountain, isn't talking to everybody on behalf of my city all the time. I don't feel I should be paying travel time for this attorney. And, and like, you know, I have less than a million dollar budget. And he and I talked about it, and he agreed to go to a flat rate for our town so we could have the prosecutor services at a very reduced rate than what we were paying. We were only paying like eight hundred dollars a month, uh, for prosecutor after we got done talking, and that was all the time she spent working on all of our cases and everything. Um, it was a very, uh, eye-opening experience that he was willing to do that. That showed his heart for municipalities to me, and, uh, I could see that. Um, so I, I've had a really, really excellent experience with that top law firm.
I have two more questions for you. Um, my next question is, um, did you reach out to any of these places and tell them that we were looking for possibly hiring another firm? Or it just happened all upon them?
Well, as it goes with everything, we as city managers, and we go from town to town, we do like to bring people we have a good experience with, albeit, uh, a city attorney, or an auditor, or, uh, somebody else. Uh, but in all fairness, it's always the council's decision on what to do, regardless of, uh, who I may say. Uh, I will say this, to answer your question. There were four law firms, whenever council decided to do this, I personally reached out to them and said, hey, you guys may wanna be interested in, in, in taking a look at this town. Of those four, only one did it.
Okay. And then the next question I have, and, and please don't take this personally, it's just, I'm just trying to make sure we're clear on everything. Um, in any of these firms here, um, do you have a personal, per- personal relationship with any of them? Do you, uh, would you say that you talk to them outside of city business on any of these firms? Not just the top one, but any of those that have applied?
Well, okay, so, let's start with the ethical part of that. Do I have a relationship with them? The answer is no. Okay, I am, I'm separate from the attorneys that way. The, the other part to your question, counselor, is do I talk to any of them outside of the city? The answer is yes. Uh, I, I do talk to the top firm, and I do talk to the current firm. Uh, I have engaged them as well. Um, that's just good business, uh, to keep, you know, to keep-
I kinda mean, like, more on a personal side. Do you use them, um, more personal?
Oh, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. I do not use anybody from the city that I've ever worked with in my personal life or my businesses or anything like that. These are not the, uh, to make it, I guess to answer your question, that one night I mentioned the one, the one law firm, it's none of these people. I, I, I hire special people for the stuff I do in my businesses that do not present a conflict of interest in any way, form, or fashion to my employer.
Okay. That, that was my question. I, like I said, it wasn't to be offensive in any way. I just wanna make sure we're clear on who's applied and how they came about to apply. Um, and just wanna be clear that you're telling me right now that you don't have any kind of personal use for, with the, any of these that are here today applying, that you don't use them on a personal basis for yourself. Is that correct?
That is correct, counselor, and that's actually, I'm actually bound by the ethics of, um, the TCMA to not do that. Uh, I can get kicked out of the TCMA if it was ever found out that I was, that I had a personal interest in anything and was bringing it to the city. That's a complete ethics violation. And, um, I, I'm very cautious to, to not do that. No, ma'am.
But I'm glad you said that. I just, like I said, I just wanna be clear that it's all in the open now before we, even if we decide that we're gonna change. I just wanna be clear that we know that you're telling us today that none of these people you use on a personal basis, and you did reach out to a couple of them, that there was, we were, you know, had some interest of possibly changing our firm, and out of those, a couple of those have applied. Is that correct?
I reached out to, to some that, that I've used in the past, yes. And only one of those wanted to vie for our, vie for our job.
Um, I really would, uh, me personally, um, I really would like to look at this a, a little bit more, a little more. And I, I know that you guys have given this to us in, in plenty of time to look at it, but I'd like to look at it a little bit more before I decide on, on if either we wanna change our, our law firm. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I kinda wanna look at it a little bit closer, and maybe talk about it a little bit more before we, we make a decision.
Everybody comfortable with waiting till another meeting to decide? Or do some, do y'all feel like y'all had enough, not time to make a decision tonight? How does the majority here feel? How do y'all feel, counselors?
I feel like the, the top law firm is definitely very experienced in municipal law, in municipal procedures. If you look at their pricing compared to their pricing, compared to what we're paying right now, um, cause we would have an assigned attorney, it's deeper, the amount of experience that they bring to the table, uh, the amount of attorneys with the law firm. I mean, from what was presented in the packet and looking over the summary spreadsheet, the, the top two looked great, but when you compare the top two to each other, the number one law firm in my opinion looks like the best option. But that's just me. If y'all need more time, that's why we can discuss.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So if we decide that we're gonna do this, how soon would this new firm come on? Would it be effective immediately? Would we have to give our other firm, how much time would we have to give them? So, I, I kinda wanted a little bit of a timeline, if you can, Mr. Lynn.
Okay. So, we are actually, at the city of Kennedy, we're actually in a unique position with the current law firm. Um, they are not under a traditional, uh, PSA with the city. They are under an interim agreement with the city. So, they knew whenever they came aboard that they may not be the city's attorneys, uh, at the drop of a dime. What we would look at doing, and it would only be professional, uh, is that if city council was to move forward this evening in deciding to, uh, select a law firm, whether it be the one we have or select a new firm, uh, what we would look at is, you would look at a period of time where the new firm and the current firm would work together, uh, in getting, uh, documents and things transferred over to the assigned, to the assigned attorney from the new firm, uh, and getting them brought up to speed. Um, you're looking at a period of about two weeks, um, before the new firm would be ready to, uh, get in the saddle, uh, on a solo basis and, and take over and, and run with it. So, we would still have access, uh, to the current firm for about two weeks. Now, one of the things that I will recommend, uh, and I would recommend it to the new firm, if we chose a new firm, would be to consider, um, using our current city attorney, and when I say that, I'm being more specific to the actual individual, not the firm, uh, that we deal with, uh, because he is representing us, uh, in some litigation. And so I would probably lean towards asking them to work side by side with him on the, uh, litigation matters. That way, uh, we don't have a, have a, have a break in, in representation there. And then just let the new firm start to come in and, and work with, uh, the everyday stuff, and then anything that would arise after they were here, they could champion and, and take point on from there. And that would be my recommendation on that one.
Okay.
I was going to say is that I don't have a challenge in waiting, but the, the thing-
I was going to say is that I don't have a challenge in waiting, but the, the thing is, if we're, if, if we're going to take the time to wait, we need to be diligent and do what we need to do so that when it's time, we can make a decision. Um, we don't want to wait and then come back and not, not be ready to make a decision again. Um, because we've had this information since Thursday, I believe.
Right, I agree with you, Leslie. I just, I don't know, I guess I just... Well, Leslie, what do you think? Do you think we should change?
Well, I, I think, I think it makes sense for us to look for the best for everything that we do, and if we can afford the best, or spend less money for the best, thing for the citizens, the right thing for the city. That's me.
Right. Justin, tell me what-
No, I, I mean, I agree with Leslie, because I mean, when you just, when you look at the breakdown on the spreadsheet, with the amount of experience and of attorneys, and what they, you know, not their resume, but their, I guess their law firm portfolio, the top two on the spreadsheet, they just really stand out. Um, and then financially, when you look at those top two, the number one on that Excel spreadsheet, it just ma- it makes sense to me, um, to go forward with that decision. Um, how do you feel?
Well, a- and the only reason I, I'm saying that I need to look at this, because I want to, I kind of wanted to ask you guys a couple of questions with, uh, you know, this, working with a firm like this, you know, being a, a city council, this is the first time I've had to work with a firm this closely. I mean, I don't, you know, have a personal lawyer or anything, but, but I guess that was my question, like, I, I get what their profiles say, and what their portfolio says, and the things that they can do, and, and their, and their fees, and they, and that, that all looks great. And I don't have a problem with that. I just, I just want to make sure we do the best thing for the city. And that's all, and I know that's all what we all want. We want the best for the city. And I just want to make sure we pick the right people, and I, I just kind of wanted to see what y'all were all feeling, and what y'all were thinking. Um, I, I really would like to talk to that first firm again, if they're still on the line. I don't know if they still are. Um, did they say, Justin, that they had somebody going to come from Austin to be, to represent us? Or where were their, where was their lawyer going to be from?
I think I said Corpus, and, and also some of the lawyers would be out of Austin. But we'll let, we'll let you talk, sir.
Okay.
All right, uh, this, this is Steve Alcorn again. I grew up in Kingsville, so my experience with Kennedy was driving to southwest Texas in the seventies, uh, before they, before thirty-seven was built, or it wasn't even quicker. But I spent twenty-seven years working in municipal, municipal law for Fort Worth, for Garland, and the last twenty-two years was with Grand Prairie. So, I've generally been with big cities, that's how, and most of the other attorneys in the firm are older retired city attorneys for different size cities, uh, usually larger. So, what we've done may be, uh, a little more than, you know, people that do the little work off to the side. For thirteen years I was in private practice, but, uh, so right now the plan is I would, you know, drive oddy miles for the meetings, that sort of stuff. You mentioned earlier about municipal court. Do they, do they have routine court with a, with a prosecutor? Or is that just kind of on the, whenever it happens?
No idea.
We, we, we do have a, uh, a prosecutor with our current law firm, currently assigned. Um, and, and we are a court of record as well, I believe. Um, the judge does hold regular courts, but with the COVID and some, uh, tragedies in, in his life personally, courts kind of spin off. But other than, other than extenuating circumstances like that, they do. Yes, sir.
So where are you coming from again? Didn't hear you.
I'm in Corpus Christi.
Corpus, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay.
I'd say I was a once a month prosecutor for the city of Benbrook for thirty-five years. I think I started because I played softball with one of the councilmen and their city attorney was, had medical issues, and they needed to replace him quickly, but, uh, I didn't do the rest of the work for them. I just, I just prosecuted, and that was just really once a month. And that was, you know, that was generally a drive for me, but I did it, I think it was just the thing to do, so.
And you're okay with doing that drive when we need to? And sometimes we have, you know, special meetings and things like that, so that, that's okay, you're okay with that?
I lived, I lived basically twenty, at one point in time I was driving seventy miles each way to work, when I worked for Garland and lived in Fort Worth. I eventually got down to just driving twenty miles a day.
That's the problem with living in a rural community, right? Everything is so far away. Um, okay.
And so, sir, this, but this is Counselor Sines. Would you be the one, uh, representing the city? Would you be the actual attorney?
I would be the contact person, the point person that would come to the, come to the routine meeting.
Okay.
The actual documents would generally be produced out of the Austin office. Uh, the, the one thing about having a firm with the diversity that we do is, you know, we have a Monday morning meeting, and we can throw a question up and get someone with experience that knows the answer on some, anything really quick, so.
Yeah.
But I'm, I am otherwise semi-retired. I retired in February of eighteen, so I don't have any other work going on that would interfere with it.
Brandon, did you have any-
Um, I'll go ahead, yeah, I'll brand it first.
Oh. Sir, is the call- I got a question for you, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
Who's got a question?
Well, okay. Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir, Counselor Breonis here. Yeah, I got a quick question for you, sir. Um, the availability that you have, uh, for a phone, phone call from one of us counselors, y'all stated that y'all would be here, uh, to take questions and everything that we needed. What would be the rate that y'all would charge the city? Or do y'all have a set rate that'll be part of the contract that we signed? So like if I had one question to ask you on one day, and then, I'll just use another counselor, for example, calls you and has three questions for the next day, another counselor calls and asks four the next day. If the questions just start piling up because they have an issue with, with something going on, would, would the bill just be adding up? Or you have a rate in the contract that you would, uh, set for us if we decide to choose a firm?
That's really something that Alan would have to decide. Uh, he, the client he's represented the longest is Bastrop, and we're having a meeting right now. But, um, I know as Mr. Lynn said, he's, he's flexible, but he makes most of those decisions. So, I'm sure he would talk to me, or maybe that we'd figure out the type of question, and it could go to me, and then gets an answer back from another lawyer, you know, quicker that way, so, I don't know.
Okay. May I chime in, councilor?
Basically, basically, our rate would be a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour, and if we talked for fifteen minutes, and we talked for another fifteen minutes, we did four groups of fifteen minutes, we, we'd be billed for an hour. Or if, uh, if we talked to you twenty minutes, so we billed for an hour.
No, we bill by the actual time, so, uh, we don't, we don't round up, you know, so.
All right, thank you so much.
If you talk for, if you talk for an hour and one minute, you, we'll bill you for an hour and probably six minutes, but not two hours, so.
Okay.
Got you.
And what I, what I don't know is that, is matters where, like, we, we confer, you're not paying four lawyers full rate for that. So, but we try to figure out how, how it works and how that gets done, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, may I, can I say something?
Justin, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I value your opinion, you know that. So, tell me honestly, what are you, what are you thinking? About this-
Honestly, I, I, I would feel comfortable with either of the top two law firms. Um, but if we were going to use financials as a, uh, deciding factor, then I would pick the top law firm. That, that's my opinion. I, I feel like after reading their, their, um, not their resumes, but their portfolios, that's both of them really my opinion.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions.
William, did you, you were going to say something?
Yes, sir. Um, I just wanted to, to say, uh, along the lines of, uh, Counselor Breonis's question, uh, to Mr. Alcorn, um, when I used this law firm in the past, um, they, well, they bill in six-minute increments, but then again, each of the law firms that submitted bill in six-minute increments, so they all bill the same way. Um, but this particular law firm would not charge me, uh, for emails. Uh, so if I sent an email to my city attorney, uh, or even to the, uh, the, the principal, uh, if it wasn't a, a five-hundred-word email like I'm prone to send, if it was a short succinct email that they could answer within a reasonable time, they would, I would never see that bill. Um, so, if you're looking for questions, I just, I just wanted to tell you that, that that is not something that I, that we enjoy right now.
Got you. Can somebody enlighten me on how to properly say this law firm's name?
Bjorkens.
Thank you.
It's a Spanish name, I think.
Bjork-
I, I'm not sure I can always spell it, but I know it's pronounced kind of Bjorkens.
Can you say it one more time?
Bjorkens, you said? The J's silent, correct? Is that Capellino? J's an eight, and that's a, but eight-
It's kind of like a double L, the way I, the way, the way I hear him say it, it's like, you know, Bjorkens. It's almost like a, like a Swedish word, but I think it, I think it's a Spanish name, is what he told me, so.
Well, I'll go, make the motion, make a motion to hire Bjorkens. God, I, that's terrible. Anyways, hire Bjorkens at new, uh, City of Kennedy, um, law firm, and, and then take Mr. Lynn's recommendation to have, um, current city attorney and our new partner city attorney, um, to work on current litigation for the next two or however weeks it takes to get them caught up.
I got a motion. Second by, second by Leslie. Any other questions?
Counselors, uh, you, are you going to authorize you sign the P S A?
Yes, and I'll also add to my motion to have, do we need to have you as the city manager, or, um, Mayor Proton?
Uh, you can do either or.
And a- a- also authorize, um, the city manager to sign any necessary and associated paperwork?
You have a motion by Justin, second by Leslie. Any other questions? There's no other questions. Amanda, please call Roke.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn? Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you, Justin.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number nine. Consideration of possible action in regard to authorizing the city manager to enter a professional service agreement for a city depository. You got a question for this next?
I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion for agenda item number nine, to consider it.
I have a second. Uh, second discussion. You have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, councilors. Um, as you all are well aware, uh, when I was hired in, uh, February, and I came aboard in March, it was, uh, at the end of March, I noticed that our agreement with our current city depository expired after five years, uh, and we needed to, uh, renew that agreement. Um, as per the City of Kennedy finance policy, we were required to go out for, uh, R F Ps for it, which the city council agreed to do. Uh, we did properly post those, uh, R F Ps, uh, in the paper and on T M A website, uh, as well as, uh, directly emailing all the local, uh, banks to let them know, and just to make sure everybody knew that we were doing this. Um, we, the result of all that was, we received one, uh, request or proposal, uh, and that is our current financial institution. If the city manager's making a recommendation, I think it's narrowed down pretty, pretty, pretty narrow as to how I would recommend.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, hiring Texas Champion Bank as our, um, City of Kennedy bank depository.
And I'll second that.
Think about Leslie. Any questions?
Um, are you going to authorize the city manager, Mayor Proton, to sign the P S A?
Yes, sir, sorry about that. And I'll, also adding to my motion, I'll, um, add that the city manager be authorized to sign the P S A and any necessary paperwork.
I'll second that.
Motion by Justin, second by Leslie. Any other questions? If there's no other questions, Amanda, please call Roke.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
I think Counselor, I know, I just realized it, I'm so sorry. Counselor Kano? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Motion passed. Item number ten. Consideration of possible action in regard to authorizing the city manager to enter a professional service agreement for a grant administrator. You have a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion we consider, agenda item number ten.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Do we have a presentation, Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, counsel. Yes, is Ms. Langford still on?
Yes, she is on. I can go ahead and unmute her in case anyone has any questions.
Okay. Before, before we turn the floor over to the council, uh, and, and Ms. Langford, again, this is out of the, uh, this stems out of the council meeting where we decided to go out for this. Um, what the council needs to know is that we solicited three firms, uh, for both the downtime revitalization program and the FAST grants. Uh, of the three firms, only one responded, uh, and that was, uh, Ms. Langford's firm. And she was the only firm to respond to both of them. Uh, we did go ahead and score everything, and it was unanimous by the people, uh, who looked at it, uh, to go ahead and make a recommendation, uh, from Ms. Langford to the council. And at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to the council and let you ask any questions of Ms. Langford that you have.
Judy, are you there?
Is she on the line?
I am. I am, I am, I'm right here.
Yeah, I mean, I, just so the council knows, I know Judy pretty well. We work together with the county. Um, huge reference for her. She's, she does a fantastic job with all of our county grants, but, um, and she also not only works for the county- But, um, and she also not only works for the county, but the City of Rungy, the City of Karn City, the City of Fall City. But Judy, can you let the council know a little bit more about you and your, uh, business?
Oh, sure. Thanks. Thank you, Justin. Um, my name's Judy Langford. I'm the majority owner of Langford Community Management Services. My thought business back in nineteen eighty-three. I joined him in nineteen ninety. I've been doing, uh, grants specifically for cities and counties, uh, since that point in time. I still love it, still have a passion for it, um, have a passion for helping communities find grants that make sense for them and, uh, uh, help better the community and, uh, help with the budgets because of grant funds to do so. Um, there's several opportunities right now that are open to, uh, to the city. And, uh, Mr. Lynn has been really, uh, hunting those, I would say, as far as trying to make sure that the city has had, has every opportunity afforded to it for, for, for grant possibilities at this time. Um, I, we, uh, we actually, our offices are just north of Austin and Leander, but we also have a sub-office in, uh, Harlingen and a sub-office in Lexington. And when we're not under the COVID pandemic, I am in Karn County quite a bit. So we've been kind of hunkering down for the last month. So I look forward to, uh, if you select us to, um, being able to come and visit with council in person in the very, hopefully in the very near future.
Judy, this is Leslie, uh, Winn, Councilman District Five. And what's your success, what's your suc, what's your success rate? As far as, you know, I know you don't get every one that you submit, so what's your success rate?
And, and I appreciate that question and, and usual question. So I'm going to say that, um, of the communities that we know will get funded and that we write and know that, that, and will tell you that you're going to be funded, that our success rate is, our success rate is generally seventy-five, eighty percent. Um, for those that, um, but we also, and I think it's a little different than some of the other consulting companies, because generally, for the most part, on many of the programs, we don't charge to do the application. We basically take the risk with you that, you know, whether it gets funded or not. So in, there's, there's some cases where, um, sometimes kind of in between the time of the application and the time of the funding, that that funding agency gets more money. Um, and if you don't have an application in, you have no opportunity to get funded. So, um, sometimes we take the risk with communities knowing that it might not get funded, but if you don't have one in there, you're not going to get funded. So, um, it, it does skew that a little bit, but if you're not paying to have an application, then, then it's, like I said, we're taking the risk with you. So, um, you know, if we're going to, if, if there is a program that we would charge for, we would let you know that on the front end. We would also let you know what we thought your likelihood of being funded is if we wrote it. But there's many of them that we don't charge for, and the two that are before you this evening, we do not charge for, and we don't charge an application fee.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Just saying for Council Breonis here, District Three, got a quick question for you, ma'am. Have you done, you, am I correct when I say you've done grant work in the past for Kennedy?
It has been a while, but yes, sir, we did.
Okay. And can you refresh, uh, my memory? I, I, we've had so much stuff happen, what it was? If I'm correct, there was the, uh, replacement of some sewer lines or something in that nature?
It, it was, and it was a Texas Department of Agriculture grant, uh, and, uh, we, we did do that, we did, we, that one was funded and we finished it with out any findings or issues and closed it with the, with the agency.
And how long did that, uh, on average, your grant that you submit, what's the time that it takes to, on average, to get a response back and to fully, fully get the total grant that you're seeking?
So, most of the, most of the organizations or most of the agencies that we work with, it, 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 it's a set time rate that they set on letting you know whether you get funded or not. So, um, and then once you're funded, they then set the contract periods as well. So like with the TDA grant, um, those are two-year contracts. And, uh, so we have two years from the time they're funded to get, uh, the environmental completed, the startup completed, uh, get it, uh, the engineers then to get the design done, get out to bid, get it constructed and get it closed. Um, usually we finish up within a year, you know, with a year, year and a half, uh, from the very beginning to getting them completely closed.
Okay, good.
So, but, but there is, there is a lot of that that also rests on how long it takes the, the engineer to get the design done. So, cause we don't, uh, that's, you know, the engineers also have their timelines as well. And, but, but we do encourage them to get things, to get done and get moving so that we can get these projects for the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I answer any other questions?
Any other questions from any other counselors? Mr. Lynn, you're, you have anything, anything else to tell the council before we go ahead and try to move forward on this item?
All I can say is I agree with Councilor Meyer on this one. Uh, I have known of Ms. Langford and that, and her firm for years. Uh, they have a stellar reputation doing this. Uh, it's definitely would be an honor and a privilege to work with her. I believe, uh, she'll be the right person for the City of Kennedy to help move us in the directions we want to go.
Okay, well, on that note, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, choose, uh, Ms. Judy and her company as the grant administrator for the two grants that we have and for the City of Kennedy. And that we authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement, um, for that, so that we can get it done.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leslie, second by?
Brenda.
Brenda? Yes, I'm sorry, Brenda. Second by Brenda. Any other questions? There's no other questions. Amanda, please call Row.
Council Breonis?
Sorry, Amanda, yes.
Council Winn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We certainly appreciate it and we're for, very much forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Lynn, did you want me to stay on for the next one or, or am I okay to, to go ahead and sign off?
You're okay. They, all they have to do is just approve to go out for the RFP.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Item number eleven. Consideration of possible action in regard to posting a request for qualifications for engineering services related to the downtown revitalization program grant.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion we consider agenda item number eleven.
I'll second that.
Discussion. You have a presentation, Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, uh, counsel. Um, okay, so the downtown revitalize, revitalization program grant has its own rules as, as to how we go about procuring, uh, professional services. Uh, one of those rules we just accomplished, uh, we had to go out for a separate, uh, RFP for a, a grant administrator. The other rule is we have to go out for an RFP for engineering to do this. Uh, they won't approve the grant if we use an engineer that we already have or an in-house engineer. We actually have to go out on this one, uh, for the engineering firm. So all we would be doing tonight, we would be authorizing us to go ahead and issue the RFP, uh, for the downtown revitalization program grant, and then we will get that taken care of.
And how many newspapers would this be pleviced in? Just the Countywide or Wilson County Express?
Uh, we could put it in the Countywide. I know, I know there's, uh, talk about also putting it in the Beeville paper as well. Um, so we would, we could definitely do that, so we could get it, get it out there like that.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we go out for RFQs for engineering, for, for a engineering firm for the downtown revitalization grant.
And a motion by Justin?
I'll second that.
Second by Leslie. Any, any other questions? If there's no other questions, Amanda, please call Row.
Council Breonis?
Yes.
Council Winn?
Yes.
Council Sine?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Moving on to item number twelve. Consideration of possible action in regard to posting a request for qualifications for engineering services related to the East Main Street Drainage Project. So a motion for discussion?
Make a motion to, make a motion to consider item twelve on the agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Justin. Discussion. All right, Mr. Lynn, got a presentation for this item?
Thank you, counsel. Um, so I put this on the agenda for this very specific reason. Um, I realize that as a governing body, you all hired an engineering firm, uh, to do some work in the City of Kennedy. I, I understand that. Um, since I have been here within, within your employment, there has been two different engineers working on the East Main project. The East Main project was originally started on, uh, July twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, and it had an original completion date for the drainage portion of October twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Uh, and while things happen and engineers change and directions change and designs change, the one thing that does not ever change are the residents and what they have to endure all this time. Um, and as I sit here as, as your new city manager and I'm looking at, at the East Main project and I'm thinking, how can we give these people some relief? Uh, we lost an engineer and the pri, one of the primaries for that firm reached out to me and was going to put a, an inferior engineer on that project. Uh, and I essentially told that individual, no, I would not accept that engineer. And I named two people that I would be okay with. Uh, they finally assigned one engineer, um, that individual was Mr. Sinovich. Uh, and he came down to East Main. And with counsel, what I'd like counsel to understand is that Mr. Sinovich redesigned East Main, but that is the third engineer from that company, and that is the third redesign. And we are almost a year late on getting just the drainage done down there. And we have spent over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for East Main to look the way it does. What happened was Mr. Sinovich and I would meet and we would talk, and he took data and he did all this work. And he created the system that was virtually perfect for, uh, giving everybody some relief and that would benefit putting in a new road down there. Um, his plans were wonderful, and I was looking forward to the completion of those plans. Then Mr. Sinovich, for whatever reason, um, left the firm. So what we're looking at today is a company that has had this in their hands since twenty nineteen. They've already had three engineers down there. They're looking at putting a fourth engineer down there. The one thing that's not going to change with this project is the City of Kennedy is going to still have to pay money to do this project. So whether we stay with the engineering firm we have or whether we go out for, uh, RFPs and maybe get another engineering firm, the fact that we've got to pay for it is not going to change. So what I looked at was, uh, when I met with Judge Hedke and, uh, Councilor Meyer, uh, a couple of months ago for the GLO Hazmit Grant, one of the things that struck me was when, uh, the person presenting that, they made the comment that, you know, drainage is a big part of this grant project. And my, my, the wheels started turning, well, East Main needs drainage. And what I found out from listening was at, you do six total projects, uh, three standalone and three in conjunction with the county. But what a project can, was, uh, considered was not East Main. East Main's not a project. But if East Main goes to Escondido Creek, if we drain it into Escondido Creek and we have, uh, Fifth Street and we're draining out into Escondido Creek as well, according to the GLO grant, that's all one project. So we can vein in problem areas within the city and we can get that as one project. So my thought process is very simply this. Uh, as I reviewed the contract with the current engineers, um, section eight termination was very clear to me that the city could always choose to part ways with the engineers on the East Main project if they so desire. And that's up to you guys if you want to do that. Uh, and one of those things, uh, that you could do it for is, uh, item number three states that, uh, immediately upon notice and writing, uh, to the professional as consequences of the failure of professional to perform the services contemplated by this agreement in a timely or satisfactory manner. So at that point, when I look at this project, I ask the questions. Is this project being completed in a timely manner? The answer is no. Is this project being completed satisfactorily? Well, it really would depend upon who you ask. If you ask certain engineers or certain people in a firm, they're going to say yes. But if you ask the residents who deal with it daily, they're going to say no. And when I look at this project as your city manager, from a complete objective point of view, I have to say, no, it's not satisfactory. We should have already had drainage and we should have already had a paved street down there long ago. And that hasn't happened. So what I'm asking you guys to do is to consider going out for an RFP, um, and let's see what maybe other engineering firms can bring to the table for East Main. Um, you know, the current firm is welcome to reapply for that, but the one thing we will have control over by going out for an RFP is the cost of the firm. They will be set, they won't increase, whatever these people tell us they'll do it for, it won't be a penny more than that. So that's why I'm bringing this to council tonight, is to get direction from you and to see if you wish to go out and see who else out there might be able to provide relief to our residents and, and do it for a price.
So when we go, Mr. Lynn, the Council Breonis here, so when we go out for, uh, we find the firm that best suits East Main's needs, are they going to do a total flip on that project and do what? are they going to do a total flip on that project and do what they feel is best for that project? Or since this was Steve's vision already and he had something good going, will this firm come in and pick up and finish where he left off?
Well, I was not given Mr. Sinovich's designs completely at his departure. Um, so what we would hope is that when they came in, they would uh, ask the current firm what they had or what they saw uh, about it and we would hope that that firm would give them Mr. Sinovich's designs and things of that nature. Um, and then go from there. Uh, but once we would hire an engineering firm, it really would be what they, what they want to look at. I mean, do they, you know, do they want to stay with this or do they think it might be better? Does the person have, you know, fifty years all by himself of doing rural streets and drainage? And he knows something better that we didn't think of. Uh, that's, that's the benefit of going out for an RFP is you guys get to, to interview the people just like you did the attorneys. And you get to ask them the questions and the hard questions and they have to answer these questions and, and make you guys happy that they're gonna be the right engineering firm for the city of Kennedy and the residents down on East Main. Um, and so that's, that's kind of what I would hope for is that we would be able to attract a firm that would either uh, pick up where Mr. Sinovich left off uh, or would be able to take it to the next level, if you will. Um, you know, that, that's kind of my hope. Uh, but the end game here is that to get the residents of East Main relief. So what I would do as your city manager and as your finance director is if we go out for an RFP, then we will call this project stopped. And then we will create a brand new budget for this project uh, with the brand new engineering firm. And so we'll quit putting money into East Main right now and we'll go out for the RFP and then when you guys decide who you want for the engineering firm, then we'll redo a new budget for it and figure out how we're gonna fund it. And then we'll go from there to get it done. That would be the most prudent thing to do in, in, in this instance, if we're gonna do that. I, I do realize that what that is asking. I realize that is asking our residents uh, down on East Main to be patient a little longer. But I think in the long run, when, if we do something like this and we keep our, we keep the transparency as to what we're doing and why we're doing it, I think the residents will overcome their disgruntlement and being upset that it's not done with, well, at least the city cares enough to say, we're gonna stop this madness and we're gonna do it right and get us taken care of. Um, that's, those are just my thoughts.
How long would it take? Okay, we go out for the RFP, we do all that, but what is, what's the timeframe we're looking at? About a month?
Um, we would be looking at putting out, so if council decides to do this tonight, uh, we could draw up the RFP this week. Uh, it probably wouldn't get posted in the papers until next week, but we could get it on TML at any time because that's electronic. Um, so then you have to run it for a minimum of two, of, of two printings of the paper or two weeks. Uh, that's reasonable. So then you're looking at two weeks. Uh, so by our August meeting, uh, we should have the uh, potential engineering firms, just RFPs who want to bid on this, in hand to present to council.
Okay.
Brandon, because this is your district, how are you, what are you thinking? How do you feel?
Well, you know, I'm just gonna come out and say, these people have waited a very long time. They've been very patient. Majority of them. There's some that are getting very, very uh, pissed about the whole ordeal because it's been changed a few, a few times. They actually like what was going on and how things are going. There were actually several people down there on East Main were actually speaking with Steve. And Steve had a lot of good stuff to say about these people. The people had a lot of good stuff to say back about Steve. He kept them very informed when they had a question. And uh, when they found out he, he wasn't gonna be around anymore, they were kind of worried. I'm not gonna say kind of, they are worried about what's to go. I told them that this was gonna be an item on the agenda and they said, how much longer are they gonna have to wait? That's, that was the first question that came out of a lot of them. How much longer are they gonna have to wait? I told them I had, I didn't have that with me at the moment. I want to find out till this council meeting. Being that we are in the dry months and a lot of the heavy rain has passed, you know, it looks like it's gonna be dry on ahead. If we can go out and get the right engineer and have it done right this next time, it'd be the last time. My question is, this to Mr. Lynn, what would be a reasonable end date for this whole project, once this is all done, after we already have everything budgeted for the next engineers to come in there?
I would say, given the fact that some of the work has been done already on the drainage, um, I would look at a reasonable timeframe of six to seven months to paved streets. That would be about two and a half to three months just to make sure we get the drainage all laid out and done correctly, which is in line with what the city had planned originally. And, and again, if we're going with one firm and it's being done and being done right and sticking with it, there should be no, no issue there. Uh, and then that's three to four months for them to, to do the road, uh, which is a reasonable timeframe for that shorter street uh, for, to do an FDR, which is a full depth replacement. So, you know, also keeping in mind one thing as well. Uh, when you guys started this with East Main, you guys were in transition in the city manager seat. Uh, so there was a lot of um, insecurity. A lot of people telling people, we'll do this, we'll do that. Uh, now there's a, a stable city manager. I think uh, I've, I've shown that I'm pretty straightforward about things on these projects. I, I hold people accountable. So if I'm told it's gonna take two months, uh, there had better be a gully washer for me not to take two months. Um, so there are some differences going forward now than where you guys were back in July last year.
Leslie, what are your thoughts?
Leslie?
Amanda, is Leslie still on the line?
Oh. Yeah, I'm here, guys. I, I was, I hit, I hit something on my phone. Anyway, my question was, um, if we stayed the course and with what we have, how long is that gonna take? That's gonna take another three to four months also, right?
Yes, sir, at least, because you don't know if this new engineer's gonna come in and redesign what Mr. Sinovich was working on or not.
That's what I'm saying. So either way, this way would be better for the citizens, better for the city. Um, and we would have somebody that we would have no extra charges showing up. We know it's gonna be X amount of dollars and that's it and this is the plan and it's a good plan and instead of being in the situation we're in now, cause if I were a citizen over there, I would not be a happy citizen right now. That's just the doubt.
Leslie, there are some that are like that.
Well, and then Brandon, another thing to consider is we're approaching hurricane season. So there would probably be some downtime coming up because of potential hurricanes coming to the area. So during that time when, you know, and I know we're saying potentially, we don't know the routes of any hurricane that might happen, but that might give us time with a new engine, engineering firm to develop new plans.
Yeah, I got you, Justin, yeah.
I, um, I feel for the citizens, you know, they've been waiting a long time and it is, it's horrible that they've been waiting and been, and it's wonderful that they've been patient. Um, but if this is something that's going to get that done and, and finally be done with, I say let's go with a new one, a new engineer. Let's get them what they need down there and, and let's get it done.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I agree, yes. And we'll get to choose it, correct, Mr. Lynn? I mean, we'll be able to hear what they all have to say if everything goes right for the August meeting?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll get the timing done. Uh, you guys will get to interview them just like you did the city attorneys tonight.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All, all I was gonna say is maybe Brandon, at that August meeting, you know, some of the concerned citizens in your district that, you know, have questions, might be a little bit frustrated, just invite them to our city council meeting or or we'll probably won't be, who knows if we'll be in person or not, but at least ask them to submit public comments and join onto the phone call. And maybe if there's specific citizens that want to talk on that agenda item, um, we can get them interactive with it as well, so they know that they are a part of the process too and we are here to listen to their needs and their wants and try to finally get this all fixed.
Sounds like a great idea, Justin. I would do that.
I, I agree with that, Justin.
Great idea, Justin.
You said the citizens need to come and, and participate and listen and know that we really are trying really hard to get this done for them. I hope if any of them are listening out there that they continue to reach out to Brandon and to any of us with their concerns and let us help them get this done quickly. And again, I feel for you guys out there. Please hang tight. We are working really hard to get you, get you taken care of.
Then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go out for RFQs for an engineering firm for the East Main project and authorize the city manager to do so.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, motion and a second?
I second that.
Any other questions? Any other, got you, Brenda. Any other questions? Well, there's no other questions. It's call Roe. Amanda, please.
Counsel Breonis?
Yes.
Counsel Winn?
Yes.
Counsel Fine?
Yes.
Counsel Conno?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action in regard to resolution twenty dash, a resolution approving the city of Kennedy personnel policy. Do we have a motion for discussion?
Make a motion to consider item thirteen on the agenda.
Motion by Leslie?
I'll second that.
Second by Cindy. Discussion.
Thank you, counsel. Um, so in my interviewing process, you guys had asked me about a personnel manual. Um, come to find out, there was already one in the works with the uh, which would be now the former city attorney. Um, I had partnered with her, uh, the individual attorney that was working with that and she sent me over the rough draft of it. Uh, I went through that rough draft. I marked it up extensively. Um, and then sent her back my thoughts on it. Uh, she looked over my markups, uh, adopted about ninety-nine percent of the markups I made. Um, and then sent me back questions about the others that she didn't adopt. Uh, we talked about it. Uh, we came to an agreement, something I felt was uh, good for the city of Kennedy and, and would serve our uh, team. Uh, and that still stays to keep the city of Kennedy legal. Um, she agreed and so we sent that to you guys. So this policy manual was a joint effort between myself and the uh, the city attorney uh, at that point. So uh, it's pretty lengthy. Uh, so I hope you guys had an opportunity to at least read some of it. Uh, so if you have any questions, I do not mind answering questions. I, I did read this thing about twice all the way through, so.
Is the city attorney on?
No, they are not.
Okay.
I had a chance to look through it, Mr. Lynn. Um, I haven't gone all the way through it. But I wanted to uh, mention that you included the uh, a donation pool of sorts. I don't think we had that before. Was that, was that something new? Cause I don't think we, we have that.
Uh, to donate uh, time?
Yes.
Yes, we did. We did put that in there so that if there is a, a team member who needs extra time, there's team members who are gonna lose time, they could donate the time uh, to that team member who's in desperate need of it. Uh, so kind of like a, a goodwill thing.
Yeah. Who's gonna keep track of that?
Mr. Lynn? That's something that, that's something that's tracked on the uh, new time system that we have. All the, whatever time they have, so it shouldn't be noth- much to keeping track of it.
Well, that's what I was wondering. I was wondering if the, the, our time system did that, that's why I was asking, but you didn't answer.
Yes, ma'am, and sir. It, it does, but it's, but that's not what it's for, okay? So let me, let me give you a hypothetical situation. You have team member A and team member B and they, they both have been in the city long enough to have time. Something tragic happens to team member A at, towards the end of the year and they're not one of our higher paid team members. Uh, so they're gonna look at using up little time they have to deal with what they need to deal with and then maybe going on the FMLA, which is unpaid. But then team member B has been with the city for a long time and they are never gonna use, say, all their vacation pay. So they can then donate vacation pay to team member A so that team member A can avoid a hardship financially for a little longer uh, at that point. Um, so it, it, that's kind of why that's in there uh, is for, you know, really extenuating circumstances type thing.
It still wouldn't take somebody additional to keep up with that, though. All of that information is kept in the time system. That A knows how much time they have and B knows how much time they have. And it should be just an AR, I mean, HR situation for them to donate that time.
Right, that's what I was asking. Was it, is it easy now? Like, who was gonna keep track? Was it gonna be just a click of a button to say, okay, we're transferring eight hours from A to B? Is, I mean, is it that easy to do? It was my, I guess I should have been more specific. Is it gonna be that easy just to transfer time over?
Yes, it is that easy. The only thing that we would do is the, the, the person donating the time would sign a form stating that they realize they're donating the time and they'll never get it back. So, but once that's done, it's just a matter of just going in and click, click and we're done.
Okay, good. And I was just gonna say that, uh, having something documented of that, um, so you guys can have that tracking. Okay, good deal.
Mr. Lynn, I have, I have a question for you. Section ten, section ten point oh five, it's on page, uh, trying to figure out what page it is, seventy-five. Motor vehicle accident. Have, before we go on talking about this, have we had any minor accidents that haven't been reported since you've been here?
Minor accidents that haven't been reported since I've been here? Uh, I have not been made aware of any, to say it like that.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm just asking because, I mean, it does require alcohol tests and stuff like that and if something were to happen when an employee takes a vehicle home and accidentally gets in an accident, they're required to report that immediately, but they, if they're, if they're scared or they're required to report that immediately, but they, if they're, if they're scared or they're afraid of some kind of consequences, perhaps, how would we keep track of that? How, how would you, how would you as the city manager find out about this?
Well, one thing that I understand from being new to the City of Kennedy is there's quite a few people that use take-home vehicles. Um, it's, it's been policy of mine through the years that the only people who technically get a take-home vehicle, uh, that's not, uh, police, i- is your directors. Uh, even superintendents don't need a take-home vehicle. Um, and that's just been a policy of mine uh, that I've adhered to that I have not brought to you guys yet. But it is the director's responsibility to ensure his fleet is in operating condition, which he then takes and puts that on the superintendent and the people who are driving the vehicle. So let's say you have, uh, employee D, and he lives a little away from here. So he leaves the City of Kennedy on a Friday night when he gets done working, and his truck is in good mechanical shape with no dings or dings. And he goes home and he decides, you know what, it's Saturday, and I live about fifteen miles from Kennedy, and nobody's gonna drive by my house, and you know what, I need to go get me a burger from McDonald's. So I'm gonna jump in my city truck, which is parked on the outside of my driveway, so I don't have to move any cars. And he gets in his truck and he goes to McDonald's, and lo and behold, when he's coming out of McDonald's, somebody side-slaps him in the back end and hits his fender. Uh, it doesn't do too much damage, the vehicle's still drivable and all that. I would expect the director or the superintendent that's over that individual to notice that on Monday morning and say, hey, when you left on Friday, you didn't have a ding. Today you have a ding, what happened? Did you report it? And then we go from there. Um, most certainly with a policy manual where it says you have to report it, that's something that would be, I would consider a terminable offense if they didn't report it. Uh, no, especially knowing that they probably were gonna have to have an alcohol test. Uh, that, that, that to me is someone trying to hide, uh, the fact that they were driving city vehicle intoxicated. Um, and that's just kind of how we would have to do it. It's just in the daily equipment walk-around, uh, of vehicles and what we have, and where dings and dents are, and then if we see dings or dents that were not there before, drill down on where they came from and how they got there. I got a, I've got a question. In all the jobs I've had before, once a year, HR would run license to make sure that was nothing that popped up that hadn't been reported, because that was part of the process of us being insured, is making sure all of those drivers' licenses was current and had no points against them. Do we do that? Um, no, sir, we do not. Um, our, uh, TML does not require that for our insurance. They require us to have valid driver's licenses, but they don't require us to print checks in. So how do we know they're valid, other than when we hire? Well, one way we could, we, we can do, we, what we should do, let me say it like this, Counselor, is once a year, the HR department should do, um, what's called a personnel audit. And what we do is, we take the folders of all the personnel and we go through them, and we make sure that all the pertinent documents are there. Uh, we make sure that all the stuff is there, and we should be paying attention to their driver's licenses when they're put in their file at date of hire. The driver's license has the expiration date on it. So when we're going through and we see that, uh, employee D was hired in, uh, November of, uh, twenty nineteen, and his driver's license expires, uh, December of twenty twenty, and it's January twenty twenty-one, then we set that aside and we drill down on that, and we find out where he is, did he renew? Why didn't he give us the documents showing he had a renewed driver's license, uh, and we pull him out of the vehicle immediately? And that's really what we should be doing as an HR department, once a year. I, um, I agree, because there's no way to know if they renewed their license or not.
I don't, yeah, a couple, Mr. Lynn, a couple of years ago, we had an incident with a, a water department employee who was driving around with an invalid driver's license.
Yes.
And, yeah, and it wasn't, now, he didn't know, or maybe he did know and just didn't say, and I can't remember how they figured it out, but I think it's something that we need to at least look at doing. Because they're driving, these vehicles are being driven out of town, in town, all, you know, all over the place.
And if a person driving our, our vehicle with an invalid driver's license, the insurance don't cover that.
No.
No, it does not. And I can, I can tell you that recently, uh, we, uh, Ms. Hines and I did a small audit of some personnel files, it was very small, just a couple of files we looked at, and we discovered, uh, a very important document was out of date for one of our team members, um, and we drilled down on that right away. Come to find out, that particular team member, uh, had taken care of it, they just failed to get Ms. Hines the updated copy, which they did bring in. So we're kind of starting that a, a, a little ad hoc, but going forward, especially once we get out of doing all these budgets and that, gonna become more scheduled, uh, to do these things. Okay.
Can, can I say something? I'm sorry, I just, I do just want to clarify that, um, at the end of May, I did go through every personnel file and verified that all the driver's licenses that were expired, that I did get a, uh, the most recent copy of them all. I don't think I mentioned that to Mr. Lynn when I did it, but I have done that recently.
And that's, that's, that's great and all, but you never know when these licenses have a hold on them, but they're considered driving with a license invalid. So it might be a good idea to at least start looking at that or doing that.
Amanda, I just, I've, I've got a question, uh, comes to Breonna's here. The, uh, over there where I work at, I don't know if you have a program, but I'm pretty sure that's how they keep up with us. They warn us about a month of time before driver's license expires, and we need our driver's license just to drive the perimeter vehicle on the property, because if we have a hospital run or we have to go here or there, we're required to take our license, it's gotta be valid. Is there any way or any program that y'all have or you can obtain to, that you modify, like, hey, Jack's, I'll just use the name as an example, Jack's expires in about a month, advise them, let them know, because once that time comes, he will not be eligible to even touch the vehicle to go, to drive it, even if it's just to drag a water hose from one side of city hall to the other, I mean, just to make sure that the city equipment does not get moved by the employee who has expired license, that way to prevent anything bad from happening when that vehicle hits the road and the person's not, does not have a legal driver's license at the moment.
Not, not at the moment, but I have been working closely with N Code on, on adding new things to our, to our system that we have right now. And I do know that there's a check mark that states, you know, when I put in their driver's license number as a new employee, if it's something that is required, so I can get with them and see if there's something that can kind of send me a reminder or send an email or something to let, um, myself and the person, um, whose driver's license is about to expire to, to notify them.
Okay, sounds good, that'll work.
And I am looking on, um, section ten point zero four, um, on page seventy-five, and it's the letter D where the city may at any time check the driving record of the city employee who drives the city vehicle as part of his or her job duty. So we can do it, and it's important that we do, do that.
Yes.
Yeah. And I believe that's actually a new addition from the old personnel manual, too.
It, it might be, but I, I did find that and I marked it, and, yeah, it, it might be, cause I don't know that it was in the old one. So that's good.
Brandon, um, Counselor Conno was accidentally, um, disconnected, so can I make sure that I have her unmuted?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm here to continue.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay, yes, okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Brenda, do you have any questions on the policy manual? You or Justin?
I, I've looked at most of it, I haven't finished, it is really lengthy, I'm, I'm still looking at it, um. I don't have any questions, I think everybody's covered anything that I wanted to cover. Um, I wanna finish looking, I was kind of looking at it right now, but trying to finish reading it all.
No, Brandon, I didn't have any questions.
Okay, Justin, just making sure, if you have any questions, ask before we go ahead and pass this, because once it's passed, it's gonna be set, so. I'd rather have all the questions asked right now before we go ahead and pass this and then go back and like, oh, uh, I didn't see that or something like that, I'd rather have all the questions asked and answered, and if we have any discrepancies or don't agree, then we can discuss it before we go ahead and move further.
Give me just a second, I'm almost done, I think, I think I'm pretty good with everything so far.
Okay.
Counselor, this is Adolfo Ruiz, I'm, I'm, I've been listening, but I'm chiming in. I, uh, I decided to go ahead and, and, uh, and, uh, uh, chime in with regard to the personal policies and the marathon lease agreement, just in case you had any questions.
Hi, actually, I'm glad you're on, I was asking if you were here, um, what did you think of the new policy? Did you take a look at that? How did you feel about it?
Uh, yes, I did, it's, it's comprehensive, I, I think it's much better what you had before, it is, it's, uh, it takes out a lot of the, uh, the, the sections we've had trouble with, uh, before, I think you could remember with regard to the city council having to review certain termination issues. Uh, it's much better than it was before. We had our, uh, employment person at the firm, uh, Clarissa Rodriguez, work on it. And Mr. Lynn had a lot of good points with regard to the changes, uh, he requested, so I think overall is why with the better personal policies y'all ever had.
Good deal. Uh, Mr. Lynn, so what, if we approve this today, how soon are you gonna have this to all our employees? Are they gonna get a, a, uh, a hard copy, are they gonna have to sign something to have in their personnel file that they've received it, reviewed it, and that you've gone over it with them?
Yes, ma'am, they, we will, we will treat it as though everybody's a brand-new hire for the purposes of this new policy manual, because there's so many changes. Um, and so what we would look at is, uh, I would have Ms. Hines, uh, begin tomorrow, I would have her come to city hall, and then her and I would be the only two in city hall tomorrow, uh, completely social distanced. And she would start putting off the policy manuals for everyone and, uh, getting the forms ready for everyone to sign to go into that. And then the way we would do it is, we would bring in the directors, uh, at my weekly meeting, and I'll go over it with them and let them ask me questions, and then let them drill down with their teams, and if their teams needed more refining, then I'll go back, or Ms. Hines will go back, one of the two of us, and meet with the individual teams, uh, to answer any more specific questions that they may have. But we will have something in their, uh, personnel folders showing that they received the new policy manual.
Okay, and we're gonna have a hard copy at city hall at all times, so if anybody ever comes and asks, if any city employee comes and asks, you guys have it ready for them to show it and show me at any time?
Uh, yes, ma'am, actually, what I'm gonna work on, uh, is every policy that you all approve and we adopt, uh, I'm gonna work on creating, uh, a policy book binder, and each policy will go in this binder, so it may be one or two binders, depending upon how thick the policies are, so you'll be able to go there and pick a binder, so here's the personnel policy, here's, uh, the reopen policy, here's the whatever policy we have. And in addition to that, I'm gonna have two hard copies, uh, upfront that are just gonna be standalone personnel policy manuals. That way, uh, they, anyone can come in at a glimpse and say, hey, can I make a copy of this one? And it'll be, it'll be, you know, kind of three-hole punched, and, uh, they can take it out and make, put it in. And we'll have two of those, just in case, you know, we need two people looking at it, but I definitely will have that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, what is your timeline, I'm sorry, Justin, what is your timeline gonna be to get this out to everybody? Do you think with, uh, and I know with COVID, you know, don't get me wrong, I know we need to do the social distancing, and I agree a hundred percent with that. But what is your timeline to get this all out to everybody, and when is it going to be, uh, you're gonna get it to your, to your staff, the, the, you know, our, um, main staff first, and then how long before that are you gonna let them know that, hey, this is now in effect, effective date? Da-da-da, do you have an effective date for this, um, is it next month, next week, two weeks, what are we looking at?
Well, I think it's always eas- I'm sorry, someone speak? Look, I think it's always easier if you pick an easy date as your beginning date with something like this. And so I'm looking August first, that's a pretty easy date to remember. Um, so we would take and we would print, and then by, by a week from Monday, uh, see, today's the fourteenth, so the, so roughly about the twenty-seventh, uh, I would drill it down with, uh, my, my directors. Um, before the twenty-seventh, everybody already have a copy, so they'll have all this time to be looking at it. Um, in twenty-seventh, we'll go over questions in our, in our staff meeting, and then I'll have them disseminate to their teams on the twenty-eighth. And then they can report back to me, uh, later that day as to whether it went over okay, or we need to drill down again. And if we don't need to drill down again, then on August first, everybody will know that, uh, they're under the guidelines of the new policy.
Okay, and any employees right now that are on their COVID, uh, if there are any, um, that are on their quarantine, are we gonna make sure we get them a copy by email or i- in some, in some way, that way they know and they're looking at it, too?
Yes, ma'am, we will do whatever we have to to make sure the information is disseminated to every team member in the city.
The one thing I was gonna add is, I, I, uh, upload the personal policy for the city, and so maybe what we do at the county is I create an H and so every time we have a new, uh, policy, I always, county website, that way, any employee, um, doesn't have a hard copy in front of them, they can always reference the website to look up whatever information they need, so maybe we could do that with the city?
Uh, yes, sir, that's actually one of the things I've, uh, laid out from Ms. Hines, that, uh, we're, we're gonna have, and the end result, let's say like this, the big picture end result is gonna be a tab on our website, it's pretty much gonna be labeled transparency. Anything and everything you wanna know about the city will be there, financials, uh, policies, ordinances, or links to the ordinances, all that kind of stuff will be under one tab, that way, at a, at the click, somebody can see or go to see whatever they need to see for the city. So, yes, sir, we will have something like that.
Amanda, can you make sure and keep track of everybody that's signing, that they've, they've received it, and let us know how we're doing, and make sure everybody gets that we're a hundred percent, that everybody got one?
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't want anybody later to say, well, we didn't get it, we didn't know, I wanna make sure we have an in writing that everybody signed it, that they got it, they, they received it, they have it in their hands.
They got, we want the, we want that deal to say that they got it, they read it, and they understand.
That's right. I don't want any questions later, like Brandon said, with us looking at it right here, you know, we wanna make sure everybody understands this, and, uh, they're looking at it, and if they ever have any questions, they know to go to you, Mr. Lynn, and, and ask you those questions without any, um, uh, you know, you know, explain it to them very thoroughly, and make sure that we all understand everything that's going on, please.
Almost, only counselor.
Thank you, sir.
It's all about building value in the, in the team members and giving them knowledge so they know where they stand and what they can do.
Yes, sir.
Then I'll go ahead.
Wait a minute, hold on a minute, I have one question on, um, performance evaluations, I don't see anything in here, is it something that, did I miss it, or does it not have to be in there?
Right, performance evaluations does not have to be in, in a personnel policy. If you put them in a personnel policy and you outline your performance evaluations and how they're gonna be in there, then then you're really legally held to that. So if you say you're gonna do performance evaluations on the anniversary date of the employee and you missed that mark, um, the employee has. Right, right. So we don't wanna put stuff like that in there that's gonna constrain us to stuff like that. Uh, but we still have the autonomy to get it done within a reasonable timeframe. What that'll be is that will be me sitting down and saying, okay, you know, Ms. Hines, uh, go ahead and start doing this and making sure the other directors know, hey, this person is coming up for review on this date. This person's coming up for review. Their anniversary date is here, 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 so that we can start scheduling that out and doing that.
Okay, I gotcha. I'm good, Justin.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen for the City of Kennedy Personnel Policy to go into effect. We said August 1st, 2020, correct, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion by Justin, taken by Cindy. Any other questions? Is there no other questions? Amanda, please call Row.
Counselor Breonna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. This is Lynn. Before I move on, what would that resolution be? Twenty dash, it has question mark. What's the number?
Oh, that was twenty-nineteen.
Okay, twenty-nineteen. Okay. Moving. Moving on to item fourteen. Consideration and possible action in regard to the approval of the Marathon Oil and Gas Lease Format.
Make a motion to consider item fifteen on the agenda?
Motion by Leslie.
I'll second.
Taken by Justin. Discussion.
Um, okay, so a couple council meetings ago, um, we had an issue with our Marathon Oil Gas Lease. Uh, Attorney Ruiz, uh, recommended Attorney Santorio, uh, to be our, uh, a- attorney to review this. Uh, Mr. Santorio has been looking at this. He had some questions which all were, you know, communicated to you guys in emails as we've gone through. What you have in front of you is the rough draft format of what Mr. Santorio is more or less approving. Uh, but before he goes back to Marathon to refine this, he wanted the city council's blessing on the format, not necessarily all the content, but the way it's set up and that. Uh, before I brought it to you guys, I did send it to Mr. Ruiz. Um, I knew Mr. Ruiz's position, but I wanted him to take a look at it specifically just to make sure that we all were in agreement, that Mr. Ruiz was in agreement, that I was in agreement, that Mr. Santorio was in agreement, before I brought it to council to see if you guys were in agreement. So, and I, I guess if Mr. Ruiz has anything he'd like to add, uh, he's on the line, he can add.
Um, Mr. Lynn's correct. Uh, Mr., uh, Santorio is a very good oil and gas attorney. I have no qualms on anything that he recommends, uh, but, uh, it was vetted, uh, and, uh, it's, it's a, uh, it's a good format. And this should also pertain, or it could be, uh, a form, to the other lease agreements the city may have. So, uh, uh, yes, I, it's, it's a good lease.
Everybody there?
Any?
I don't have any.
I don't have any questions. There.
I don't either. Hey, counsel, before you, before you entertain a motion, uh, just let me, just let me reiterate, reiterate one thing. All you're approving is the format. Uh, if you approve this, then I, I will go back to Mr. Santorio. I will tell him the council approved it, then he will go back to Marathon. And then when he has the final document, we will be having another meeting with this on the agenda as a final document.
Yeah, this is just the format.
Right. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Marathon Oil Gas and Lease Format.
I'll second that.
Second by Brenda. Any other questions? There's no other questions? Amanda, please call Row. Amanda?
I think she's on mute. I'm sorry. Counselor Breonna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Moving on to item number fifteen. Consideration and possible action in regard to appointing Brenda Yanisak, Karnes County Tax Assessor Collector to calculate the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate for the 2020 tax year. You want motion for discussion?
Make a motion to consider item fifteen on the agenda?
I'll second.
Second by Justin. Discussion. Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you, counsel. Um, okay, so essentially what we're doing here with this is, um, she's gonna take, uh, our certified tax rolls and our, our debt structure and we're gonna give her our debt and she's gonna calculate, uh, our effect, what used to be called the effective rate uh, and our tax rate, our rollback rates, um, and she's gonna calculate all those rates for us uh, from the information we provide her, uh, from our debt and from the information that she gets from the certified tax rolls. Um, so when she's done, we'll have our M and O rate and we'll have our INS rate, uh, whenever she's done as to what our tax rate's gonna be. And historically, the City of Kennedy has always asked the assessor to do that, from what I understand.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Brenda Yanisak, the Karnes County Tax Assessor Collector, to calculate the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate for the 2020 tax year.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Justin, second by Leslie. Any que- any other questions? There's no other questions? Amanda, please call Row.
Counselor Breonna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno? Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed. Item number sixteen. Consideration and possible action in regard to baseball field lights stored at the wastewater treatment plant. Motion for discussion?
Make a motion to, uh, consider item sixteen on the agenda?
I'll second.
Second by Justin. Discussion.
Uh, counsel, uh, in my trips down to the wastewater treatment plant, I've noticed these wonderful poles laying on the ground, uh, wondering what they were. And after further review, I, I noticed they were lights. And after talking to people, I found out they came from, uh, where the complex is. Um, we have approximately at retail, rough number, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of lights laying down there doing absolutely nothing. Uh, they are wasting away. Uh, condensations getting inside, uh, the, the wiring area, possibly ruining the wiring. Um, and I'm just trying to seek direction from my counsel as to what you all would like for me to do with those lights, whether you want me to keep them and leave them down there in hopes that we're gonna use them at some future date? Uh, do you want me to, uh, maybe go out to municipalities or eBay? Uh, or even, um, TML's website where they sell stuff and try to sell them? Or, or do we scrap them? Um, what does counsel want me to do with these lights? And, and the reason why it is being brought to you is because of the retail value. The lights is well over a hundred thousand dollars. So.
I thought. I was always under the impression that the City of Lidl was looking to purchase these.
The City of Lidl?
Yes. I mean, I, I. I, I mean, I just thought they were looking to purchasing them is what we were told.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Brenda. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought that the Kennedy School was gonna use them for their temporary field back there behind the school. I thought they were gonna use them. Am I not right on that?
Well, I was under the impression that the City of Lidl was looking into buying them is what I, when I look back at the meeting on August thirteenth of twenty nineteen, it was stated that they were looking into buying them, but they weren't able to get the funds or something like that. But according to this email, they never, they never even did that. So I, I don't know.
Yes, uh, I called, I called Lidl. Go ahead, Justin, go ahead. Go. Justin, go ahead.
There, all I was gonna say is I, I kind of remember what Cindy was saying. I thought the mayor had said that there was another city that was interested in purchasing them from us. I just don't know if that's still true or not.
Yeah. I did, that was what I heard too. I did call Lidl up and, um, I wanna get some clarification on whether or not they were still interested in the lights. And I spoke to the city manager and the city secretary. They both were gonna look into it. And obviously, there was a city councilman that was working to get new lights, but it was, they were told that nobody, well, according to the email that was sent, nobody from Lidl ever contacted the City of Kennedy about this. It was Musco Lighting did tell them that they were providing lights for Kennedy, but that they had never told them that our lights were for sale or that they never, Lidl had never gotten in contact with Kennedy.
I would just say, if you can find somebody to buy them, I would say sell them.
I would too. I mean, that's a lot of money sitting on the ground. That's a lot of money right there laying on the ground.
Yep, I agree.
If we, if we sold those lights, Mr. Lynn, if we, if we could find somebody that would be willing to buy those lights, and I'm just throwing an estimate out, no number or anything, just, we're, we're just talking, uh, hundred thousand, like you said, say a hundred thousand, like they gave the city, two hundred thousand, whatever the value or whatever they decide, they think it is and they decide to pay. Could we use that money and put it towards the sports complex?
Well, we could use that money and put it towards the sports complex, okay? But let's, let's think about this from a, a different perspective, okay? Um, the sports complex is so far over budget, a hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna make a difference. We could, what I'd rather maybe happen is the council maybe look to recoup us that money into something else. Maybe we pick a street and we redo a street with that money. Maybe we, you know, maybe we put that money in East Main Street. Um, you know, or maybe we have a piece of land sitting vacant and we use that money to create a neighborhood park with it. Um, I think with, with the small amount that we're looking at possibly getting out of it as far as in the grand scope of everything, I think we could find a better use of that money than to throw it at something that's already sucking money down. Um, and that's just my thoughts on that, counselor. Uh, I, I'll have no problem going out, looking for a buyer for this. Uh, the only thing that I think we're gonna find with this, and this is probably the only downfall to looking for a buyer, is, um, we're gonna have to be able to show them that those lights currently work. Um, they've been down for some time and it's my understanding they worked before they were putting down at the wastewater treatment plant. But since they've been put down there, we've had all this torrential rain, uh, that flooded, that's, that's, that's gotten, you know, water into their electronics and that. So I don't know if these halogen lights are still gonna work or not. Um, but that sort of side, I, I wouldn't see why maybe I couldn't get with maybe Musco and see if Musco could run, if they can, if they have the capabilities to run a test on them. And if they did, it wouldn't cost us to have them run a test. I, I would have, I, I would be willing to have Musco run a test on them just to make sure they're operational before we put them out for, for sale, if council's okay with that.
Fred, can I do? Fred, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Justin.
Yes, sir.
Isn't, isn't there over in your district, I wanna say somewhat close to your house, isn't there like a plot of land that was gonna be used for a park or has at least a little bit playground equipment?
Right, so the land, the piece of land that's across the street from my house, from what I understand, was going to be a park. But then they, the Parks Board was told that that land is gonna be used for the new water tower so that they're not able to use it as a park anymore. That's what the city told them. So right now, I, I don't know what they're doing with it. It's empty. There's nothing on it. They, they mowed the grass on it, but, I mean, it's just in there alone.
So let me, can I talk?
Yeah, people walk on it, um, but really, there's no lighting. There's no seating. There's, it's just a piece of property and the city cuts the grass.
My, my, my suggestion is to the council and to the city manager, what if, um, we, uh, deemed the, um, old baseball park lighting as surplus? Then went out for bids for other entities to bid on the lights, have a reserve, let's say the reserve is twenty-five thousand dollars, accept maybe three or four bids for the lights with anyone we find interested? And then maybe use those monies because on that side of Kennedy, there's not really that many amenities for the citizens. So if we're not gonna be putting a water tower over there anymore because of our new water source, maybe we buy, uh, one or two pieces of nice playground equipment to give back to those citizens on that side of Kennedy. That would be my suggestion.
That would be good. Cause that walk-in trail right now is just rock, so when the grass grows, I mean, it's just kind of like, uh, gravel. So when the grass grows, pretty much it's all gone now because the grass has overgrown it. So a nice little sidewalk for like a walking path would be great out there.
Whatever you would take.
People do use it. And if you get with the Parks Board, I know they were working on it for a long time to put something out there. If you reach out to them, Mr. Lynn, I bet you they can have, they have some plans of some things that they were, were looking at probably possibly doing out here on that, on that piece of property.
I believe, I, I believe we're all on the same page. I believe that's the right move. Um, yeah, I will tell you that.
First and foremost, we've gotta make sure the lights work.
Yeah.
Yes.
I gotta make.
People, the people who put up the shades out at the park, at the complex, they actually are manufactured for playground equipment. And I, I really did like how they did things. They, they, of all the contractors we have, they were my. they were my number one contractor I liked. Um, so I think if we can ensure that the lights work, I think council and mayor has a great idea of declaring them a surplus and bidding it out. And then repurposing that money into something for the community. Uh, since we have a plot of land that's being used, let's go ahead and enhance it, uh, for the residents in that area. I think that is a totally awesome idea.
Me too. Love it.
Well, then I'll go ahead.
I would love to be, Mr. Lynn, I would really love to be a part of that. Once we figure out, like you said, if the light's working, we sell it and we decide to put something out there, I really would like to be a part of that. If you would please include me in that to help with getting that up and running.
Oh, most definitely, counselor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we declare the lights out at the water facility as surplus. Um, then instruct the city manager to find out with the lighting company if the lights actually work. And then if so, um, then let's go out for bids, um, to other communities to see if they'd be interested in bidding on these lights.
And one quick question, are we going to save some of those lights for this, this park? Or are we going to sell all of them?
Well, that's, that's the good, that's the good question. The lights we have out there now are more state of the art than these lights we. Um, I would probably, and I know it's a cost to us, but I would feel better about just putting brand new lights out at the park like around Johnny Bear, uh, when we get ready to do anything out there than using these lights. Especially if we can, uh, get these lights sold through a bid and, and move forward. Um, certainly we can look at, if a municipality says, I only want half of the lights and that's all we can move, then we can look at what we can do to repurpose the other half at that point.
Okay. Sounds good. I was just wondering if they were possible to use them, if we needed to use some of them.
Yeah, and one more question. Uh, it's a great idea. The, Mr. Lynn, if, say we don't get, say they work, they work, they're in great shape and they don't, they don't, um, get sold. Nobody's, who's fairly wants them or anything. Can the city donate them to a nonprofit like the, how, I mean, like the park over there? I don't too sure if the park will take all these, all the lights. There's a lot of lights there. But perhaps like, say the housing authority, they have a playground that could use a little bit of lighting or seek group them there as well, or what, the city can't, can't donate, uh, equipment like this.
Yeah, that I would defer to the attorney to answer that question. Because there are a lot of rules with the city donating anything.
Okay.
And, and I could ask the question if, if you'd like. The, um, uh, the city actually declared surplus if it hasn't already. And with regard to nonprofit, uh, depends what type of nonprofits the city, uh, has in mind and the value of the, of the, uh, of the items. Uh, and, and Mr. Lynn is correct, that's a very, that's, it's very difficult, uh, uh, question to answer. But the first is to get the value of the property. Then, then the city can discuss whether it can, uh, make the donation within the, uh, uh, within the parameters of the Texas local government code.
Yes, sir.
Brenda, I would say. Do we get a second on the motion?
Yeah, I would say let's just stick with my motion if everybody's in agreement. And then if we don't receive a bid, then let's look at it next time.
Yeah, no, I agree, Justin. Yeah, yeah, great, great motion there, yeah.
I'm on second, I'm on second his motion.
Uh, motion by Justin, second by Leslie. Any more questions? No other questions? Amanda, please call row.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Heinz?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor Bier?
Number seventeen, consideration and possible action in regard to canceling the Kennedy Music Festival due to COVID-nineteen. Do I have a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to consider item seventeen on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leslie, second by Cindy. Discussion. Mr. Lynn, presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, counsel. Okay, so, uh, back in the spring when this whole pandemic was really rearing its head, we made the tough decision to move the Kennedy Music Festival from May to Labor Day weekend uh, in the hopes, uh, that things would be calming down and we would be able to have it and enjoy it and bring all these, uh, people to Kennedy. Um, we did have the understanding that if things did not, uh, calm down, that we would have to revisit this. And unfortunately, things have not only not calmed, they've escalated in the state of Texas. Um, they've canceled such things as the state fair in Texas and, uh, Fiesta in San Antonio. There, there are so many things canceling, uh, that we just need to go ahead. And that's why I put it on the agenda to address it now so that, uh, Ms. Heinz could get with all the artists and vendors who were maybe looking at possibly being here and let them know what we're doing. Uh, and then as well as letting our residents know that we're going to have to do this until next year.
And just to add into that, I just found out that Lonesome Dove Fest is also canceled.
Yes. I know the Texas State Fair, council.
Who was that, Justin? I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
No, I was just letting you know, I was talking with Judge Heckey because he's on the Lonesome Dove Board and they went ahead and canceled Lonesome Dove Fest as well.
Oh, okay. I just didn't hear who it was.
Yeah, it's also, that's Texas State Fair, Frank, uh, sober, like, Fiesta. Lonesome is trying to cancel and those are further out than our new fest.
We have how many, we have how many cases in Karnes County now? We have how many cases in Karnes County now?
I know, uh, yeah, they just have eighty-one or eighty-two somewhere in that neighborhood.
It's eighty-six, but as far as confirmed cases that the investigations are being completed, I want to say it's like sixty-four. But needless to say, most likely it's in the eighties.
And the number continues to rise.
We just have another hundred cases, you know, reported today.
I think these will be canceled.
I agree.
I mean, my, I'm all for music festivals. I'm all for bringing the community together. But it is increasing. We just had that test done at, uh, Auto Kaiser this past Saturday where we administered five hundred and fifty-four tests. We can expect that we're going to get a pretty big spike when those results come in. Um.
Yeah, they'll come in. Some of those results are already coming in, Justin. I have, I've already heard of, of a few positives.
Yes, we had, the results aren't completely in. They're about one-third in. Um, but we did get, um, a hundred, I want to say it was a hundred and sixty-three of the tests in today for Karnes. And there was, I'm, I'm not at liberty to say, but there was, was some positive cases come in. So once they're officially reported through the state, then we'll report them through the county. Um, but yes, the, the cases are going to increase.
So I definitely think we need to cancel it.
Yeah, I think it's the best thing to do, you know, right now, considering.
Protect the public and.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be.
vendors, it's the artist, like, we can't call them up a couple of weeks before and say, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to have to cancel. They're going to expect to be able to keep their retainer or payment. That's why these festivals, you know, they take several months of planning, which Brenda, I know you know that. But unfortunately, you know, the way things are looking in the state of Texas, the way they're looking in Karnes, everything is increasing. This unfortunately isn't a necessity to have. It's something good for the community. I'm, I know with everybody else, I think it's just, there's too much unknown. The, the increase in tech, back, um, that's their silly drive.
I agree with you, Justin. I think it's, it's to keep our, our, our citizens safe. Um, you know, once this is all over and, and we come to some kind of normal or new normal, we can consider doing something at that time.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's going to be a new normal because things are definitely, I know you know that working at the hospital.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we cancel the mail fest.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leslie, second by Cindy. Any other questions before we move on? There's no other questions? Amanda, please call row.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Heinz?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number eighteen.
Mr. Brianna?
Excuse me?
Mr. Brianna?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead and, uh, as the city administrator, uh, manager who's on this executive session, I'm going to do this in open session.
Okay, sir. No problem. At your request to be open session. Number eighteen. How would I read, um, we will stay at open session. Item A, consideration and possible action in regard to signature of employment-related documents. Item B, consideration and possible action in regard to William Lynn's relocation.
I'll make a motion that we consider item eighteen on the agenda.
Motion by Leslie.
I'll second that.
Second by Cindy. Discussion. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. Counsel, I, I put this on the agenda, uh, this way because it's not a resolution amending a contract or anything. Uh, I just need to, uh, get some help from my counsel on item A and some clarification, uh, on item B. Um, back in March, uh, of this year, uh, at the council meeting on March twenty-seventh, uh, the city council, I made a motion to put me on the, uh, as a signature on the account of Texas Champions Bank. Uh, and they also approved for me to, uh, take over or to stay at the apartment that the city count, add to the interim city manager. Um, and then in June, you all, uh, adopted a resolution, uh, to amend my contract. Um, while the city of Kennedy is set up such that resolutions and ordinances become effective even without the signature of the mayor after five days, uh, the minutes do not, uh, and neither do the, uh, contract amendments. Um, the mayor has yet to affect either of the amendments to my contract. Uh, and he has yet to sign the minutes, um, of March twenty-seventh. Uh, Texas Champions Bank, uh, really fails to recognize me until they get a copy of the signed minutes. And then I need the affected amendments to my contract signed, uh, to put in the files. Uh, so these three documents are specific to me, to my employment. Uh, and that, that is why they're on the executive session there. I'm asking the council to authorize the mayor pro temp to sign these documents for me, uh, so we can move forward with that. Uh, before I move on to item B, any questions about item A, what I'm asking?
Uh, I heard you say that the other stuff that we do that if the mayor doesn't sign it, it still goes into effect after five days, even if he does not sign?
If it's an ordinance and resolution, it does.
Okay.
Everything else the mayor has to sign.
Um, and, and I wanted to ask the council if they were aware that there's some stuff that still needs to be signed.
I, I've been, I've been made aware, but do we know why they're not being signed? Is it just a matter of not being able to go in or?
Amanda may be able to shed a little bit more light on that, but I don't know.
Yeah, Amanda has been more in contact with the mayor about that. Uh.
Amanda, do you have any, would release that info for us or?
Uh, yeah, so, so the last time that I spoke with the mayor about signing the document, we had agreed that he would come to city hall this past Monday to sign everything. And then on Monday morning, I received a text that he was not going to come to city hall until city hall was reopened to the public. And that was the last that we spoke about it. And then he did, he did state that, that when he came in to, um, pay his bill, that he would pick up the documents and take them. However, I have to attest to signature on the document. So he's not able to take the documents home and review them and then bring them back.
So, uh, just a real quick question and to kind of just keep moving things forward. Brandon, are you working tomorrow?
Yes, but I get off at two o'clock.
So then Brandon can, if, if I make a motion for you to meet, uh, Amanda and the city manager up at city hall, would you be able to go by after work?
Absolutely, Justin. Yes, sir.
Okay, so then I'll just go ahead and make a motion for part A of this agenda item that we, um, approve the mayor pro temp to sign the employment-related documents, including the amended contract and the minutes from, um, that council meeting.
Now, motion by Justin?
I'll second that.
Second by Leslie. Any other questions? There's no other questions? Amanda, please call row. Right of me.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Heinz?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes. And then also, Amanda, with that, if you want to put that exact March minutes date, I, I didn't catch the, I didn't write down the, the date Mr. Lynn said. But if you want to amend my motion to include that correct date, um, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
That was the twenty-seventh of March.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Okay. So item B, um, when you guys made an offer to me, we negotiated a salary and a few other things. The one thing we did not negotiate was any relocation package. Um, I am not asking for a relocation package. I need to be clear about that. Uh, we didn't negotiate it. I don't expect it. Um, what I am asking my counsel for is some leniency. Um, my family has possibly found a home, uh, that we can get into uh, in very close proximity to city hall. Uh, it's not in the city limits, but it's very close. Uh, it's not in the city limits, but it's very close. Um, and I'm going to need about a, approximately about a week off of being in City Hall in order to move my family. Uh, I'm not sure of the dates as of yet, but I do know that it will be sometime in August. And I'm going to preface it by saying, provided that Governor Abbott doesn't shut things down to where I can't move my family. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm really, you know, I want to make sure that I'm fully thinking here. What I'm asking counsel for is this, I currently have two weeks vacation, six personal days and eighty-six hours in the contract. And I'm asking counsel to not penalize any of that and to let me, uh, remain on the salary knowing that I'm going to have my cell phone with me, that I'm going to answer text messages and calls on behalf of the city, uh, while I'm moving. And that's what I'm asking counsel to do.
I do have one question. While, while you'll still be hearing texts and phone calls and emails, et cetera, will there be a chief person in command? Like, will Chief Ash assume head of command while you're out? Or will it still be you?
Uh, it'll still be me because, uh, I'm, I'm only moving from point A to point B. And once I get the furniture to point B, then it's just unloading, I'll be in town. Um, or here in the area. So the way we're trying to do this, and my family is working very diligently to try to minimize my absence from the city, um, as far as physically goes. Uh, they are working to pack the house all this time. The few times they've come down to visit, uh, they're packing the house, uh, off time, uh, they're going to bring a truck down by themselves while I'm still here. Um, then we would all leave together, uh, to go back to get the rest of the stuff and, and pack what's left at that point. So, uh, I'm trying to minimize my physical presence out of the city as much as possible. Um, but I know that moving is going to take a while. And that's, that's just why I wanted to come to counsel to ask permission for this. Uh, it is well within y'all's right to deny this and that's fine if you do. Uh, I'll figure out another way at that point. Um, but I have to give you all the respect of at least asking upfront.
And then, well, the only other question I really have, um, is your new relocation, is it still going to be within Karnes County?
Oh, yes, sir. Well, I think so. I'm pretty sure. They said they were, I, I mean, it's like, it's not even a half a mile from the city limits.
Okay, then you should be good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm pretty close, but I'm, I'm kind of a private individual. When I get a house, I really, you know, people don't need to know, but, um, I'm really close. And I, that's why I'm really excited, because I'm going to be close.
Yes, sir. I, I just want to make sure you're still here in Karnes, you're still in close proximity. Yep, I'm not asking for you to disclose that to us or to the, the, the meeting in hand. I'm, I was just making sure you're still wearing close proximity, you know, still here in Karnes.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. This particular home is, is, yeah, very close. Yes, sir.
Was it anybody, is anybody that has a problem with, with us giving him the time?
No.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
I think as long as we can reach you at least phone call, text and, and get a decent answer within a decent amount of time, I don't think that it's going to be an issue for me either.
I would just also let the chief know during that time, so in case we need to get something immediate and you, you can't get to it, at least the chief will be on standby.
Yes, my, my, my directors will be on standby and I probably will name chief as pulling on that, since he's the emergency management coordinator for the, uh, for the municipality. And I would, and whenever I get my dates, I'll send you guys an email like every, letting you know the exact dates of everything so you'll know.
Yeah. Then we don't need to make a motion or anything for this, do we? We just need to say it's okay, right?
No, you do need to make it through a motion.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to take action in regards, in regards to William Lynn's relocation, that we're going to allow him, uh, a week in August that will not be taken from his personal time or his vacation time to move himself and family to Karnes County.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leslie. Second by Brenda.
That was me, Brandon.
Oh, sorry, Cindy. Second by Cindy. Y'all broke up. Okay, sorry about that. Got a motion by Leslie, second by Cindy. Any more questions? If there's no other questions, please call.
Counsel Breanna.
Yes.
Counsel Winn.
Yes.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel Kano.
Yes.
Counsel Meyer.
Yes.
I'll agree.
Motion passed.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. You do that. Make a motion to adjourn. Well, before we adjourn, I'd just like to say, great job everyone tonight. We did a great job, got a lot of business taken care of in an orderly fashion. And this is where how the city needs to go. It, we, we did a lot, we took care of a lot of business. And if we can continue doing this on a regular basis, it's nine twenty, we'll be done quick. Straight, like I said, great, like Leslie would say, get straight to the point, ask the questions needed and let's make a move on it and go to the next item. Just want to re, say it again.
Right.
I did a hell of a job tonight. I'm proud of all y'all. Sir.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion, second by Justin, meeting adjourned. Everyone have a night.
I just wanted to say it's a pleasure serving you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, have a good night.